So that's how I got involved in the work. And then for the reading of the Church Fathers and John of Christendom, if you do not find Christ in the poor, you will not find him at the altar.
So I've just been out with the outreach group for the first time and we've walked around the streets around this church where we worship every week. We've met five people who were on the streets, some of whom were already known to Michaela and some of whom we didn't know. We've given out hot drinks, we've given out food and sandwiches and we've managed to also speak to a housing officer for one person and speak to a drug officer for another.
I'm Mohamed, I work with Start Sheffield Treatment and Recovery Team. Today we've come out with the parish nurses, which we do outreach, which we really enjoy doing. It's different from doing outreach with other agencies. It's more one-to-one, it's more softer approach and people approach us.
Right, thank you very much colleagues. Don't be afraid of being in a haunted council chamber. Just think of all those aldermen from the past, and I believe they were older men. Right. Thank you all for coming. So, oh, I have to say these things, sorry. And by the way, I've now got a footstool that I can actually sit on this chair. Third result. May I welcome and the viewing public to this first ordinary meeting of the full council to be held under the new committee system of governance? Now, we've been talking about this a bit in the pre-meeting with WIPS and we recognise that this is going to be a bit of a difficult meeting again about the way we are conducting business in this new way. And once again, I think you should all have your L plates on and we are going to be very patient and kind to each other, aren't we Paul?
Does that include me?
No, it doesn't, you're not included. But councillor Turpin is going to be kind. And... No, no, only you are going to be kind. And we're just going to see how it goes, particularly with the voting because this time we're going to be voting electronically. So has everybody signed in with their cards? Is there anybody who hasn't and still needs assistance to do that? Nope, that is a good start, thank you. Right, I'm now going to ask the Director of Legal and Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements, Gillian please.
Thank you Lord Mayor. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing inside the town hall wherever this is possible. Please try to avoid congregating around exits and entrances, follow any signage which is provided such as one-way systems to help keep you safe. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting. Council members, officers and members of the public are recommended to wear a face covering when moving around the building and hand sanitiser is available for your use. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. Can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the evacuation signal sending, please take instruction from the security attendants who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. For those of us in the chamber, the main staircase via the ante room is not in use. We would need to evacuate via the doors at the rear of the chamber, turning right and making our way down the corridor and into the stairwell, then using the fire escape which leads to Cheney Row. Once you've exited the building, please make your way to the assembly point at Tudor Square. If for any reason your path to Cheney Row exits blocked, turn left out to the chamber, go down the staircase at the end of the corridor and then use the fire escape which leads to Surrey Street. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information. For safety reasons, please may I request that the recording equipment is not held over the balcony? Thank you.
Thank you Gillian. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5:30pm but I shall adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point in the proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Right. The reason why we have fewer of our Lib Dem colleagues here is because they are currently attending the funeral of former councillor Mike Reynolds. So before we start, oh, come in Shafak. Right, what an opportune moment. Sorry, Shafak, are there more members of your group on their way?
They are coming in now.
Right. No, I was about to start the discussion about Mike Reynolds. Am I expecting them imminently or are they all in different cars coming at different times? Right, okay, well let's have a minute's wait while we wait for our other colleagues to arrive or not. Are your other colleagues arriving Jo? While we're waiting, shall we take apologies? So I have, for my apologies, I have Penny Baker, Ben Miskell, Zahira Nas, Peter Price, Martin Smith, Dawn Dale, Sophie Wilson and Penny Baker. Are there any that I have missed? Okay, thank you. Hello. Councillor Otten, could you just tell me if it looks like all your group have arrived or coming? Thank you. Thank you, thank you Jo. Right. Okay, before we start the formal business, I now propose that we hold a minute's silence in memory of former councillor Mike Reynolds who passed away on the 19th of May at the age of 79. Mike had served on the council from 2006 to 2010. I'd also like to reference Mike's role in helping to make Sheffield the UK's first city of sanctuary and we know that this was something he was very passionate about in particular because it chimed with his strong Christian faith and sense of fairness. His funeral was held at 12:30 today and as we know, many members of the council were in attendance and have now arrived. So if you would like to join me in a minute's silence, please colleagues. Thank you colleagues. What I have said is that we won't do formal tributes but that I will write a letter as the Lord Mayor on behalf of the council to his widow to express our condolences for the loss of a good man. Thank you. Right, I'm going to move to item number three on the agenda, which is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest for this meeting? None? Okay, in which case we are going to move to public questions and petitions and other communications. I'm just going to say that we need to acknowledge that it is Her Majesty the Queen's Platinum Jubilee this weekend and as you can imagine, I won't be home at all. I'm just going from event to event to events. There are lots of things happening all over the city, which is very gratifying to know. And I hope you'll all be going to local events in your wards. One thing I would invite you is that tomorrow at about nine o'clock in Norfolk Park, which is actually the best park in Sheffield, we will be lighting the Jubilee beacon. So everybody's welcome to come to that. And apart from that, enjoy them yourselves. Right, at this point in the proceedings, I'm going to provide an opportunity for Michaela Suckling and Marjorie Skidmore, who are parish nurses from the Parish Nurses Project, to make a short presentation to the council about their work, which is operated from St Matthew's Church in Carver Street in association with parish nursing ministries across the UK. The project supports some of the most vulnerable people in the city and I want to provide an opportunity for Michaela and Marjorie to explain to members of the council and the people of Sheffield who've come today about who they are and what they do. And I'm indebted to councillor Denise Fox for bringing this to my attention. And Denise, who is at the back waving, has got an envelope which she'll be passing around so that we can make donations to the work of this project. So with that, Marjorie and Michaela, who are over there at the microphone, please go ahead.
Thank you Lord Mayor and thank you councillors for letting us attend. You may be wondering how we've got here. We're wondering that ourselves a little bit. We have a parish nurse Sunday once a year, which links in with International Year of the Nurse and this year we invited the previous Lord Mayor Gail Smith and the leader of the council Terry and his wife Denise. And following a presentation, they thought that you might all like to hear about our work. So we're really delighted to be here, thank you so much. Please do accept our condolences for the loss of councillor Reynolds and all the great work that he's done. City of Sanctuary is just such a blessing to us and is great to talk about when we go around the country and talk with our other nurses. So rather than me talk at you, we have a video to share with you that basically shows the work that we do. I'm aware that there's lots of questions to be asked and petitions to put to you and you have a difficult meeting ahead, not least with the new technology of electronic voting. As a Member of General Synod, you have my sympathy with that. It will all become clear, I'm sure, as time goes on. So we'll show you the video and then if you have any questions or if you want to contact us afterwards and arrange a visit or just get in touch, then Kate Sheldon has our details. All right, thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Michaela, I'm the lead parish nurse. I'm with Marjorie. I lead a team of volunteers who are really dedicated and we're delighted to share with you all the work we've been doing over the last two years. So in this short video, you're all going to hear about our work in the market, Marjorie's walking group, our one-to-one work and our outreach work on the streets. I hope you enjoy and thank you so much to all those who contribute to our work.
The parish nursing project has had a really big impact across this area and district in which we work. The nurses have been able to get into places which we haven't been able to access before. Everything from sort of working with the homeless to having a stall down the market, being able to signpost people to other services. But also working with projects where there were significant issues around drugs rehab and the nurses have been able to make such a positive impact there.
Father God, we thank you for this dear and we just pray that you be with us as we go out around the streets of Sheffield City Centre today. We just pray that you guide us that way and reach out to those people that really need some help today and really need some comfort. Just be there with us, guiding us and watching over us and be with the people out there, Lord. Give them the sign of your hope and your love, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We've got a team of volunteers now that are seeking to support the nurses and are going out with the nurses onto our streets. It's a simple offering, sometimes people will offer just to give an hour a month but that helps us to extend the ministry of the nurses and also to grow volunteers to equip them in ministry and in service to our local community as well.
My main role is on the weekly outreach where I make sandwiches and then distribute sandwiches and hot drinks to the people of Sheffield. My main inspiration for the work probably goes back to the words of Jesus in St Matthew's, the story of judgment. Inasmuch as you did it to the least of these, you did it to me, to feed the hungry, give drinks to the thirsty, clothe the naked. So it really struck me then that I shouldn't just be reading this or quoting it but trying to do something myself, so that's how I got involved in the work. And then for the reading of the Church Fathers and John of Christendom, if you do not find Christ in the poor, you will not find him at the altar.
So I've just been out with the outreach group for the first time and we've walked around the streets around this church where we worship every week. We've met five people who were on the streets, some of whom were already known to Michaela and some of whom we didn't know. We've given out hot drinks, we've given out food and sandwiches and we've managed to also speak to a housing officer for one person and speak to a drug officer for another.
I'm Mohamed, I work with Start Sheffield Treatment and Recovery Team. Today we've come out with the parish nurses, which we do outreach, which we really enjoy doing. It's different from doing outreach with other agencies. It's more one-to-one, it's more softer approach and people approach us with comfort and plus Michaela gives out medical advice as well. There's spiritual guidance which a lot of people want and Michaela does have funds as well where she supports them where the mainstream don't, where I provide taxis to either hospital back to their residents of where they are stopping for mobile phones, sleeping bags, food. Yeah, I don't think there's anything limited with a parish nurse.
I was very poorly. I've been in addiction for about 30 years. My parish nurse never stopped coming to see me and she also gave me some good stern words. Also went to St Matthew's Church, which really helped me along the way but she stuck by me, which a lot of people haven't done. So I'm very, very grateful for that as well.
Hello, my name's Anne and I'm one of the workers at the Cancer Information Hub in the market and we're just across the way from the parish nurses store. And I've got to say that it's really very helpful because we have lots and lots of information about almost any aspect of cancer and care. But of course we're not clinicians and that's why it's so important to have somebody nearby who can reassure the people. And I've got to say on a personal level that Michaela has been really great and helped me lose over a stone and a half of weight. I saw it and went across and said, could she weigh me? And indeed she did weigh me and they're really fancy scales that I've never seen before and I've lost an inch of visceral fat, ha ha!
Hello, I'm Jean, I'm one of the organisers of the walking group. We go out most months, once a month, then leisurely walk. Takes an hour to two hours, normally round Sheffield but we're looking at to hopefully get out to Derbyshire in the future.
Hello, I'm Marjorie and I'm a parish nurse at St Matthew's. And we're out walking today on our walking group. It was started about two years ago. Thought what a great way to sort of get people moving, get people outside, connecting with each other in quite beautiful spaces that people weren't aware of in Sheffield.
I'm Nick, this is my third walk on the parish nursing St Matthew's walk. I go on the walks because it's a nice short walk, there's usually interest of historic note and we always stop for a coffee and it's a good way to meet new people.
Walking is so good for you, it slows you down. It makes you more aware of your senses, what you can see, what you can hear. It's so good for relieving stress and any anxiety or mental health issues that you may have. It's also good socially, you meet people. So for people that are lonely, it's good for them to get out there and have someone to walk alongside and share stories and just be sociable.
They're very friendly and they're very helpful to those of us who go more slowly. Marjorie's always there to pick me up when I'm in. Make sure I don't get lost. But I like seeing new places and wherever I live, I've always liked to see the city and learn about the city. In my youth, I liked to travel to different places. So this is a hobby of mine of getting to know a place. I just enjoy it.
I find it remarkable the openness towards God amongst those we serve. Often if we ask to pray, they're open to that. May well show us some religious aid in which they're wearing a cross or a ring. And there have been some moving incidents regarding the faith of these people.
The reason that for me I do this is not just because it is fulfilling to, you know, reach people in our community but it is also because, you know, it's what we are called to do as Christians. In my heart, I really feel that there is a real need out there to reach the people of Sheffield and it's important because actually there's a lot of hurting people out there, a lot of people that don't know that they are loved by God. Jesus tells us that one of the things that we do need to do is be amongst the people who are really struggling and be in that real kind of help in the time of need. What we do with the parish nursing is not just the stuff on the streets of Sheffield, making sure that the people who are homeless are taken care of. It's also people that maybe have a home but they just need someone to chat to. So yeah, it's a real joy to be part of the parish nursing project and there is a real need for it out there.
I can discuss faith with my clients and that doesn't matter what faith they are but it's just that recognition that faith is important in all of our lives and if we live that to its fullness, then that does bring healing and wholeness.
I think it strengthens my faith because I'm actually doing something. And also I think it opens me up to engaging with those less fortunate than myself, lets me appreciate the good things I have because after we finish the outreach, I return to a comfortable home with loving family and friends.
The parish also has wanted to support the parish nursing project and one of the simple ways that we've done this is we've asked people in addition to their regular monthly giving to the church to just give £5 a month to the parish nursing project. That's enabled our nurses to buy electricity, say for people who need it, who've run out of that at home or to get a taxi home for somebody who lives on the edge of the city and is in a vulnerable state. It's been invaluable, that regular but small support and it's also enabled people who maybe haven't got very much money themselves to feel that they're making a real contribution to the project.
I hope these going to be most parish nurses. It really helps to have somebody that does really care. The people that you do have in church, they are so considerate and they are right. They want you to change, you have to change yourself but it's just good to have a parish nurse around. Please, please help other people like Michaela's helped me.
This project has been a great blessing to me as a priest to have co-workers in this area. It's been a great blessing to our parish because it's helped us to extend our ministry and it's been a real blessing to our city. Many people have commented to me what a difference the nurses have made and many people have been able to see them walking around in their distinctive blue and red uniforms and capes. So I give thanks to God for this project and for our nurses.
She's just a miracle and a pleasure to work with.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I know today you're talking about the cost of living crisis and we are certainly starting to see the impact of that on the streets. Some of the work from the money that the donations have given to me, we helped to fight the fuel poverty that people are facing. So quite often we'll get an electricity key to just put £10 on and that helps to keep someone at home rather than begging on the streets. I really do not envy you your task of trying to make the numbers balance. I know that the budget is continually cut, which doesn't help but please do be assured of our prayers and our very best wishes. Thank you so much. And may I, on behalf of us all here, thank you both for coming for your presentation and all the work that you do for the benefit of our city. And I will ask Kate Sheldon to send round to everybody details of how to contact them if you want to. Okay, so thank you very much. I don't know whether you want to stay for the rest of our exciting meeting or whether you... Sorry Mazza, I am trying to chair this meeting. We were making a lot of noise about it. Thank you. If you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome but if you've got lots of work to do, I perfectly understand if you need to leave. Thank you. Right. And we're now on to petitions and public questions. Public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at council meetings. We encourage questions or petitions to be submitted two clear days in advance of the meeting to help public attendance at the meeting to be managed in a safe way and to assist members to provide responses or answers. Petitions or questions received after submission deadline can be presented or asked at the meeting at my discretion as Chair of the meeting. I have received some late questions and on this occasion I will accept them. But what I will say is that under the new system of committee... But what I will say is that under the new system of committees, most questions and petitions which come to full council will be referred to the committee which would consider them. Under the previous arrangements, the answers you would receive would be from a cabinet member who would have the ability to say yes or no to your request on the spot if necessary, or to refer it somewhere else. These days, under the committee system, your requests, your questions will be forwarded to the committee that is relevant. So what you may want to do is make sure that when you find out which committee your petitions or questions are being referred to, that you then attend that committee meeting as So at this meeting, we have three petitions which will be presented and questions will be taken from five members of the public plus the questions I have received just now. A period of sixty minutes is allowed in total for ordinary petitions and questions. So can I call upon the Director of Legal and Governance to announce petitions and may I request that petitioners be brief and keep within their time limit of three minutes? And may I also request that members keep within their maximum time limit of five minutes? You don't have to use all of that time when responding to people. May I also ask that questioners be as brief as possible when asking their questions and that members keep their responses short and succinct. So thank you in advance for your cooperation, everybody. Can I call on the Director of Legal and Governance?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've received a joint paper and electronic petition containing 2,145 signatures requesting the council to abandon the Park Hill parking scheme. Alison Rositer and Dave McClelland wish to address the council.
Yes, so thank you for receiving our petition. I first heard about the Park Hill parking scheme on our local WhatsApp group and we don't have a car, we drive bicycles and use our feet in public transport, so I thought it wasn't relevant. But our neighbours were really upset about it, so I thought, okay, I'll fill out the online survey. But at that time, I actually wasn't aware of the details of the petition, I just didn't think it was necessary and it seemed like a waste of money and my neighbours didn't want it. And then there were a lot of comments coming up on Facebook, like what is our beautiful heritage district going to look like when it looks like a parking lot because there will be yellow lines painted all over the streets and there will be parking meters on these beautiful streets with hundreds of year-old houses. And I'm from America where we don't have this really amazing architecture and I am very in awe of it and I did think, that sort of woke me up, that seemed a little sad. And it was also the idea of pay and display meters on the streets. For me, I don't want my visitors to have to pay to come and visit me, we don't have a problem at all on our street. And this is the case for many of the sixty-five streets included in the plan that goes through most of Norfolk Park and into Arbuthnot and Manor Castle. And so a lot of people were complaining and we thought, let's get together a petition. So I leapt in and did that and that connected me with a group of about twenty volunteers who took off with the politician, the politician, excuse me, petition and went door to door in the neighbourhood to collect signatures. The total that they gave you comprises five hundred and twenty-four on the e-petition and what's the number on...
One thousand six hundred and twenty-one.
One thousand six hundred and twenty-one on the paper petitions which were collected door by door. And many, many, many people were not aware of the details when we presented it to them, they just thought it was going to be permit parking that would guarantee them a parking space. They didn't understand all of the other implications and the overwhelming majority were against. I'm going to let David speak more because he's been in the area a lot longer.
Yeah, thank you very much. When councillor Fox addressed our questions at the LAC meeting, he assured us that if we made it known that the majority of our residents don't want the parking scheme, the council had no interest in wasting taxpayers' money on it and could either abandon it completely or scale it back to specific areas and whatnot. And Alison's mentioned the numbers that we've got. We hope that the numbers that we have make it clear that there's a very significant percentage of residents do not want the plan to go ahead. Interestingly, feedback from the foot soldiers who are doing the petition door to door are that even on Norfolk Road and Belmont Gardens, many residents are against the proposed plan. Some of these are against it altogether, feel that it's not actually needed. Others want something to help with their parking but see that the current plan is likely to cause more problems and so we hope that you will consider our petition. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, it's recommended that the petitions refer to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee.
That's it, I think.
That is it?
No questions.
Okay. Right, that's my first bit there. It says, may I invite councillor Mazarik Ball, who is co-chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, to give an initial response.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And just trying to, spoke to Alison and Dave as I came through, you came across really confident and thank you for the petition. I did speak to your, managed to speak to two of the ward councillors, the Lord Mayor's one of the councillors, but obviously with her diary commitment, it's always extremely busy. Following the discussion with your ward councillors, I'm waiting for the officers to give me a response back because myself and Julie have only been in the job just under two weeks, we're waiting for a written response. I hear where you're coming from, the consultation was to gather that feedback from residents like yourselves, good, bad, whatever it was, we need to hear from your residents, that's the most important thing. We haven't taken any decisions whatsoever and when I spoke to you both, Alison and Dave, I did say I will arrange a meeting, either one of us, myself or my colleague Julie will come down, have your local councillors there and we can have a thorough discussion and we can go through the information that we've received, the feedback and what the next steps are. Really sorry, I'm not able to give you any further information, but as I said, hopefully when we get to meet round the table, we'll have the information, your councillors will be involved and we'll make a decision that helps to improve the situation down there. And the final thing I'd like to say, it's really good to hear Alison and I know Mr Hughes who's up there and we have a new heritage champion to say, you know, it's really good to hear that you love the heritage and the city. Thank you ever so much. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. The second petition contains a hundred and fifteen signatures requesting action regarding the pavements on Sheldon Road. Marian Gerson and Chris Colcott wish to address the council. If you'd like to come to the microphone. While you're doing that, can I just mention, I believe, that the next meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee meeting is on the fifteenth of June, which is when the petition will be addressed by that committee for those people who've come to ask about it. So, is that okay, Dave? Thank you. Right, I'm sorry, would you like to continue?
Lord Mayor, councillors, Chris and I are here to represent the people who live on Sheldon Road. A hundred and fifteen have signed a petition asking our councillors and streets ahead to sort out the issues affecting our pavements. Last summer, we asked councillor Alison Teal to help us with getting Sheldon Road pavements repaired, as everybody agrees they're in a shocking state and have been for a long time. She refused. We then took the petition to both meetings of our local area committee. Again, we were told they couldn't help. The reason given was that pavement repairs are the responsibility of Amy, so it was Amy's fault. But that isn't true. Four or five years ago, Amy came twice to begin the work. In each case, they were stopped by tree activists. The problem is that there are tree roots raising the pavements in some places. Many of these issues can be sorted out quite simply, but there are two plane trees where I don't think this will be possible. Planes are different from most other trees because they widen at the base as they get older, like me. So, some of the plane trees in London Parks are five metres wide or more, so ours will eventually block the pavement. A man who has one of these trees outside his house wrote, people are forced to walk on the drive to avoid it. Meanwhile, they're creating a crossfall of over twenty per cent on this narrow pavement and this is highly discriminatory for people with buggies, wheelchair users and the elderly and disabled. Nothing can be done about the pavements until it's been decided what to do about each tree, whether to cut it down and replace it with something more suitable or to do some engineering solution. Once this is sorted out, Amy can get on and do their work. We want our pavements repaired before yet another winter. Now Chris is going to talk about what residents have said.
It was my impression that the vast majority of the people we contacted were pleased to be able to give their opinions on the state of...
The university has been really great to me because I've been offered...
Apologies for that.
Okay, okay.
Keep going.
Yeah, on the state of the pavements. It is an issue which really matters to them. Many commented on the lack of safety due to the uneven surface. Several reported seeing people tripping over and falling, others that they or their children had tripped and fallen themselves. The uneven surface and lack of width of the pavement, in particular in parts, presents special problems for older disabled people and mums with pushchairs, buggies and prams. These problems are magnified in winter conditions. One person told us he fell over and broke a leg and suffers with arthritis as a result. Another told us, we see many accidents outside our house due to the uneven pavements. Conditions have worsened in the year since we presented the petition and will continue to deteriorate if nothing is done. We hope that councillors and Amy can come up with a plan to provide more ease of movement and safety for the local residents as a matter of urgency. Thank you.
It's recommended that the petitions refer to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, which meets on the fifteenth of June. But in the meantime, can I invite councillor Mazarik Ball, co-chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, to give a brief initial response? Maz?
Well, thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you Marian and Chris for presenting the petition today. It's good to speak to you earlier. As I said to the previous petition, unfortunately, I've not been given any background information, but councillor Nigget Bisharat has made me aware, the commitment I gave yourselves and Nigget is that we'll come down to Sheldon Road and have a look myself, but from the experiences that Chris has mentioned regarding residents, I think it's equally important that we get up there pretty damn quick to try and resolve the problem. It is with the new committee system that we've got, so please forgive me for the technical information, it's not just myself, we also have councillor Jordan who chairs the waste recycling, forget the last bit, the committee, but between us, we will hopefully try and resolve the problem and I'll also inform the other two ward councillors. I can't comment why Alison and the other councillor had taken a decision, but the important thing is we will definitely turn up, we are here to listen and working with your new local councillor, we'll try and bring a solution to Sheldon Road. Thank you once again for coming up. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Very, very briefly, Joe.
Well, Lord Mayor, I'm not sure quite what the procedure is. I believe streets unions under my committee and not councillor Ickbell's, so obviously it's something for us to sort out, so please bear with us because this is a new governance situation we're operating. And can I say, because I have been briefed on some of these issues and I might be able to give you a better answer than councillor Ickbell did, I'm aware that a number of roads in Netheredge, Sheldon Road being one, have not had the full street head treatment and part of the reason for that is that there was a new plan to be put in place when the original tree strategy of just removing trees that were causing problems, that had to end for reasons that I'm sure many in this chamber know of and they will be very happy if I don't go into. But that meant that a new strategy had to be put in place and had to be consulted on specific to each road that hadn't had the full street head treatment in Netheredge. And I understand that that is in progress, there is a work of progress in developing the strategy for each road and in consulting on it. So I do understand that happens, I'm quite happy to take it up in my committee, I believe that's where it sits, but if councillor Ickbell wants to weigh in as well, he's most welcome and I will certainly come and visit Sheldon Road, I'm familiar with Sheldon Road, but I'll certainly come and see it with you as well. So there you go, thank you.
Thank you councillor Otten. Final petition contains twenty-two signatures requesting better speed controls on Fox Hill Road to protect pedestrians. Rob Brice wishes to address the council. If you'd like to come to the microphone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillors. And I'd first like to thank the parish nurses for the amazing work they do in the community to congratulate the other petitioners for the amazing response they got. I'm going to keep it brief, you've got plenty more to discuss, but I'd like to present the petition for better speed controls on Fox Hill to primarily protect pedestrians. As we've been seeing over this last few years, the implementation of low-traffic neighbourhoods across the city from Crooks down to Sherravale, it aims to improve active travel, but we need to be thinking about how active travel is fostered and encouraged in other parts of the city that don't have these local communities but still need to get around their area to improve public health but also to reduce carbon emissions that we as a city produce. There's been an issue with speeding on Fox Hill Road for a number of years now, I've spoken to a number of residents in the course of collecting the signatures for this petition. There are speed bumps higher up, as cars come down Deep Hill, they speed up, as they come from the junction, they speed up up the hill before they get there. This is especially bad in evenings and weekends as antisocial driving takes precedence as people, especially in the winter months, don't feel like they have to think about the pedestrians using their roads. This makes families who use the shopping areas on Halifax Road, on Killon Way Business Park, also feel unwelcome. Those walking to school, we want to foster people interact from their communities by walking to school, it makes them feel unwelcome. It makes the elderly feel like they can't get around their community during the day, that those with limited mobility can't cross roads because they don't know how long they've got to cross. This culminated in 2017 where a death occurred on the road, but nothing yet has been done about it. The proximity to Hillsborough Stadium is also an issue. On match day, due to the lack of parking in Hillsborough, which is soon to get worse with the building of the new business park opposite the stadium, a lot of cars use the free parking in that area, the unrestricted parking, the lack of yellow lines to park in proximity to the stadium, which just makes the situation worse. There is limited visibility, the roads are constricted, so on match days, residents of this community, a community that wants to feel at one with the stadium... a community that wants to feel at one with the stadium, they are doubly impacted, not only by the speeding, but also by the parking. I know money is tight. There is discussion, there is debate on the cost of living, but also on the financial restrictions that Sheffield City Council is going to be facing. I'm not expecting speed bumps or other major roadworks to correct it. All I'm asking is for either please to implement mobile speed cameras on evenings and weekends to make sure that people in the area feel safe, or the implementation erection of the vehicle activated speed signs, which as cars drive past it, show people how fast they are travelling, so it is kept in the forefront of people's minds how they're travelling on those roads, so that people feel safe crossing them, but also that pollution is kept low. That's all I've got to say. But I want to make sure this community is represented, that its concerns are listened to, and that something is done to make people feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you. It's recommended that the petitions refer to the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. But may I also invite councillor Mazurikbal, co-chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, to give a brief initial response.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And Rob, many thanks for the question. It's good to speak to you earlier. And I'm grateful you recognised the difficult position the councils in 12 years' worth of cuts, another round of cuts coming ahead. Regarding the petition itself, again, as I said to the petitioners earlier, unfortunately, for some reason, I've not been able to get some technical information from our offices. But you must be, sorry, start again, pleased to say that our local councillors down there, councillors Dunn, Chaplin and Dams have been very, very proactive. I'm grateful for councillor Dunn forwarding me this email earlier in the week. They have been in touch with South Yorkshire Police and the partnership out there. We got some data back, which I'm more than happy to put in writing and pass it on to you. There were speed checks in March on Fox Hill Road, Cooper Road and Longley Lane. But that doesn't mean it's stopped there. The councillors are demanding more, like the residents, because of the issues that they're picking up. So more than happy to work with the local councillors, work with the residents down there to see how we can proactively get the police there, but also make motorists aware that this is a residential community and you need to reduce speed. So once again, thank you ever so much. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the councillors for furnishing me with that information. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
We now move on to questions. And my first questioner here I have is Stephen Bergen. Right, and you've got a microphone there. So it says here I have to call you to the microphone. I think I've done that bit. So if you'd like to ask your questions.
Yes, this is in relation to the Park Hill and Norfolk Park permit scheme. I read the initial business case and I had several questions. And I've actually put them in as an FOI request, but I've not had a response yet. So the questions are: Where are the backing documents to support this proposal? For example, the case of need based on the number of complaints per road? The risk analysis, cost benefit analysis, opportunity cost analysis and income stream analysis? Could somebody explain the costings that I've received back from a senior transport officer that says it's going to cost £650,000 to set up £241,000 per annum to run? And will only get £57,000 income per annum? That's a lot of £184,000. The third question is: How has the proposal been drawn up without all the information available? Because I understand that it's not available, and yet the proposal has been put forward. Has any consideration been given to reviewing the 2018 parking strategy in light of the changing work patterns following Covid and the change of patterns within Sheffield and the wider UK? And can anybody explain that the cost to income ratio is going to cost more than four times to run than it will bring in? And finally, have any workforce planning numbers been done regarding staffing the proposed scheme, such as infrastructure costs, hardware costs, et cetera?
Thank you very much. And may I invite councillor Ickbal to respond to your questions, please?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Stephen, for the questions. I'm sorry you've had to put a Freedom of Information request. I have had a written response to the question, so I'm more than happy to email them across to you later on this afternoon. Regarding the need for this scheme, there was an initial business case in 2018. When I responded to the petitioners earlier, some residents said they'd like something there because of the issue with parking, road safety and everything else. And as we've heard today, we've had many residents say to us, 'No, it's not needed. That's why it was important to have a business case.' And as I said earlier to the petitioners, we've also had your local councillors involved in this process. Regarding the costs, more than happy to provide a breakdown to where that cash goes. So we'll be installing various equipment and so forth. And there's income that comes from parking meter, the permit and so forth. So I'll provide a very detailed response through you, Lord Mayor. And as I said, we'll be organising a meeting. And if you have anything further else, you don't need to put in a Freedom of Information request. If you contact me or my colleague, we'll try and respond as quickly as we can. So through you, Lord Mayor, we'll be providing a written response. And I will also copy in your local councillors. Thank you for coming in today.
Right, I was so excited at having you speaking, Stephen, that I actually missed the first question I was supposed to ask. So please, can Eileen Turner come to the microphone? Right, can we get a microphone to Eileen in that case, please?
Hi, my name's Mrs Eileen Turner. I'm 79 years old. Since becoming a pensioner and classed as civilly disabled, I've got a single lymphedema in both my legs. I first met a company called Sheffield Community Transport back in 2014-15. And they provided a scheme called the Travel Buddy Service, which were funded by the council. It was a lifeline to the disabled, the lonely. They came with us to help with the shopping needs like that. But in just a few short years, we lost the funding. And now there's nothing. And I'd like the council to look into this, to see why we've lost such a vital service. Because it's not only the mental thing what it has on somebody's health, but everything else what that service provided. And when I first started going out with them, I paid a nominal fee of £15 for going out for three hours a week. I used to go out on a Tuesday and a Friday, which cost me £30 a week. But when the funding was taken from the council, they wanted £15 an hour for us to be taken out, which was no way, none of us could afford that money. And I first approached my MP, Louise Aitken, on the 1st of February last year. It took some considerable time for her to come back to me. And she replied about the door-to-door service and the bus fares and things like that. And I said, despite all that, it's nothing to do with the bus fares because the bus fares are already subsidised. It's about the Travel Buddy Service. What we need back because it's a vital service to not only me, and I'm one voice speaking out for the many of people in Sheffield what are now watching their homes with nobody to help and without shopping. And I'm asking the council to get us our Travel Buddies back, if you will.
Thank you very much for your question. And I'm going to call upon councillor Mazurikbal to give an initial response to your question. Thank you. It will be looked at, I imagine, again at the committee I mentioned earlier, which will be held on the 15th of June.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Eileen, for coming in. These are the tragic consequences of having a Tory government as the discussions this afternoon are on cost of living crisis. Back in 2010, when we had the coalition, that's when the cuts started. The reason there's been a delay, Louise, getting back to you, the MP, is because she wanted the information from ourselves. Like you said, many residents in Sheffield relied on this service. It was subsidised by ourselves as a council. And then you, as a service user, as you said, made a contribution. Due to those severe cuts, we could no longer afford to subsidise. And as you recognise, pushing the cost back onto service users was just unaffordable. And therefore, the service had to be unfortunately cut. But as the Lord Mayor has said, more than happy for us to, myself and Julie, to take it to our committee for a discussion. We have also a new mayor, Oliver Copard. He's gave a commitment. He wants to bring public transport back under public control. We are in regular discussions and we will pick this up with him to see if there's any opportunity through the region to support an initiative such as this. So more than happy to investigate, but I can't give you a commitment here today to say that we can reinstate it. But we can scope it out, stay in touch with yourself and other service users, keep you informed of is there a possibility of bringing this back or not. But once again, thank you for coming in today.
Thank you, councillor Ickbal. Our third question is from Chris Broome. Please, can you come to the microphone to ask your question, Chris?
Okay, so I'm just asking this on behalf of South Yorkshire Climate Alliance. So in July 2019, the council received a scientific report setting it a carbon budget that would be in line with the international agreement to keep average global temperature rise to well within two degrees. Since then, we estimate that if Sheffield has followed the national trend, it would have used nearly 40% of that all-time carbon budget already. So the question is, are councillors aware of what that proportion is? And will they tell us? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. May I call upon councillor Mazurikbal, co-chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, to give an initial response? Thank you, Maz.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Chris, for coming in this afternoon and asking a question. Very technical. I do have a technical response, which I'm finding difficult to understand myself. But here we go. We have been collecting data from 2018 and 2019 from the actions that we've taken from the Tyndall Report. Happy to share that data with you. And yesterday, the day before, Monday, I think it was, Tuesday, the committee had the members of the new committee, Transport, Climate and Regeneration, met for the first time to look at our work programme. And we've had, I think, we've had an email from your colleagues from the Climate Alliance as well. So happy to meet up with you. I'll provide a written response. But on this side of the chamber, we've signed up to addressing the climate emergency. The council's made a commitment to delivering net zero by 2030. And we need to be very ambitious. We keep banging on the door of the government because they're the ones that have the cash. We have a number of levers that we can use. But without the investment in our infrastructure, it's going to be very, very difficult. But more than happy to meet with your colleagues. I've had a discussion with councillor Grokaw, and I'll include it into our work programme. So many thanks for coming in this afternoon. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Maz, and thank you, Mr Broome. Our next question is from Robin Hughes. Robin, you've written quite a long question with lots of description that goes with it. Would you be able to paraphrase some of it for us? Please?
Well, it is two questions on behalf of two different organisations, so it may look longer than it really is. They submitted us two questions, Lord Mayor, and to be understood as entirely separate from each other.
I understand that. There's just three paragraphs, a preamble, then a question, and then three more, and then a question. So if you could be succinct about the preambley bits, please?
Fine, they're right. So the first question is: On behalf of Joint Imperated Sheffield, we're encouraged to see small but increasing signs of the council's recognition of the role of heritage in the economy and the fact the constitution places a responsibility on the TRCC committee to champion heritage. An emotion also addresses the question today. And we welcome these moves, but we're keen to see recognition of that value go beyond the usual assumption that heritage serves the leisure economy and the visitor economy in particular. Historic England's research shows that as a whole, the sector contributes £36.6 billion GVA to the English economy, of which Sheffield's fair share would be £240 million per annum. And there are various things this does not include. I should say about half the measured economic value of that heritage comes from the construction industry, so well away from leisure. And the question is this: What will this council's strategic approach be to realising the full value of heritage in all its forms, to the economy and skills? And how will this extend to maximise the benefits to climate change, education, health and wellbeing?
I'll ask. What I'll do is I'll ask councillor Ickbal to respond. I believe it's you again, Maz. And then you can ask your next question, just so that we have both of them taken seriously. Thank you.
Sorry, Lord Mayor. Point of order, I don't believe this is in the remit of councillor Ickbal's committee. I think unfortunately, it's in Economic Development and Skills. The chair is not here, and I believe the vice chair is also not here. So I'm not sure how we can best deal with this question. But I don't believe it's in Transport and Climate. It's a heritage and economy type question.
Okay, thank you. But as neither of those people are here, and we do want the question answered, and I believe that councillor Ickbal has been furnished with an answer. Shall we let him get on with it?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Mr Hughes, for the question. Sorry I've not been in touch. Been away. It was my daughter's birthday and I promised no gadgets, no work. So she turned 12. And thank you for the birthday wishes from colleagues as well. The answer is yes. Can I begin by first thanking the outgoing heritage champion councillor Mike Drabble? Did an amazing job. And we've got a new incoming heritage champion in councillor Janet Riddler. And she has already been in both our ears, Monday, straight after Labour Group. So she'll follow on the good work from councillor Drabble. I've also had a conversation last week with councillor Smith, picking up councillor Otten's point. There will be crossover between various committees. It's like climate, for example. I see that running across the committees. And heritage will also, like inequalities, be a thread that runs across the- will also, like inequalities, be a thread that runs across the theme. So more than happy to have a discussion with councillor Smith and see if we can arrange a discussion with yourselves. And just to say through you, Lord Mayor, we have started regular discussions with the joined up heritage and have agreed to have them on a continual basis. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ikbal. It sounds as though councillor Riddler should also be included in any of those discussions and for you two to meet up, sorry, so that you can talk about some of your concerns and she'll know what you have. And your second question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So the second question is on behalf of Hampshire Historic Buildings, and it concerns historical information relating to the John Lewis Building. Councillors may remember at a cooperative executive meeting on the 16th of March, I was assured that this information would be made available. It was requested, that was diverted without consultation with me to Freedom of Information, and the Freedom of Information team has so far provided only a limited portion of information, which the council already had to hand and had already shared with a third party. So the question is, does the council agree with me that it would have been a more efficient and appropriate route simply to send the information directly to me when requested rather than create the unnecessary delay through the FOI process? And can the data be delivered without further delay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hughes. Councillor Ikbal?
Through you, Lord Mayor. The simple answer is yes, we should have provided the information, it didn't need a Freedom of Information request. As I said earlier, through you, Lord Mayor. Happy to receive emails, we have a new champion as well, so if you get stuck, please get in touch. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Our fifth question comes from a Nether Edge resident. Please, can Kate McDonald come to the microphone to ask your question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm here exercising my democratic right as a citizen to bring these questions to you today, and they're all about the introduction of the low traffic neighbourhood in Nether Edge. I'm sure you've seen a lot about it on social media and the press. I'd just like to say I welcome the recent statements made by the chairs of, co-chairs of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee committing to greater engagement around the plans. I'd like to say to start with, I really support the low traffic neighbourhood policy, but the way in which the experimental traffic order was rushed through without local consultation has created considerable anger and distrust. In the interest of transparency and restoring public trusts, can you answer the following questions, please? First of all, there's, oh, I'll ask them all together because they're all about the same thing, is that okay? Thank you. There's no public record of any decision on the introduction of the ETRO. Who took the formal decision to introduce the ETROs, please? Secondly, I understand there may be no requirement to undertake consultation beyond the statutory notice to introduce an experimental traffic regulation order, but I know from personal experience that this is not good practice. Why was there no consultation about this? I live within, well, actually I live on the boundary, it's like 25 metres from the actual line on the map. Why was I not even notified about the ETRO? And please note, I don't consider a notice seven foot high on a lamppost to constitute notification. How have the comments received during the earlier consultation on the scheme, which I participated in, been taken into account in the implementation of this trial phase? And my next couple of questions are actually about displacement, and I know that the committee will be taking a real interest in this because it's so important. And the big risk, the biggest risk around these sorts of arrangements are that traffic just goes somewhere else, so somebody else has got to deal with the problems. So can you confirm that traffic surveys have been undertaken on all surrounding roads so that the impact of displacement can be evaluated? And likewise, can you confirm that baseline air quality measures have been taken on individual streets surrounding the low traffic neighbourhood so that the impact can be assessed? There are already queuing traffic all around the area, it's absolute chaos at the moment. My last couple of questions: what criteria will be used to evaluate the success or otherwise of the so-called trial on the low traffic neighbourhood and also on adjacent streets? And how will the adverse effects of traffic displacement on surrounding streets be balanced against the benefits to residents within the low traffic neighbourhood? And finally, there was considerable disruption last week due to the absence of signposting. Why has there been no signposting before closing roads? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, local resident. Can I call upon councillor Mazza Ikbal, who is the co-chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, to give you an initial response?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and it's good to see you, Kate. It's been, it's been chaos, if that's the right word, since me and Julie have picked this up. I'd like to thank Nigger and councillor Marouf Ralph for taking my call last week. I did leave two messages with councillor Garbutt. We're picking up everything you've just said. Residents are coming back and saying we've not been properly informed, we've not been properly engaged, and as you've clearly highlighted, the information and the way we advertise and the current signs that are being put up are not good enough. So for me, it's important that this scheme is seen as a success. We all want to see low traffic, active travel neighbourhoods, and that's why working with all the councillors in that ward is important to ensure that this scheme is a success. We want it to be an exemplar for everything you've highlighted. I hope you don't mind me calling you Kate, I keep thinking of councillor McDonald on the back nine. We'll provide a written response. We are holding a number of events. Working with councillor Bishara, she highlighted what you've just said around residents not being informed, engaged and so forth, so we're in the process of organising a drop-in and all three ward councillors will be invited. We're having similar issues up in Crooks and Walkley, so again, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank Tom, councillor Hunt, and councillor Curran for bringing this to our attention. And there's some sterling work done by the new councillor Crooks off his own back, councillor Minisch, and his colleague councillor Milsom have organised some community events at the end of June, so it gives me an opportunity to plug that, both myself and councillor Grokaw will be coming there. But I will be providing...
And thank you for coming. Right, I've got some additional questions because some questions arrived last night, and because last night I was in a really good mood, I agreed that these could be heard today. I please don't make a habit of this ex-councillor Hussain. And because we know that in the new world of committees, this will be going to be answered by a committee, you might find that that would have been a quicker route for you than coming here. But off you go.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry for the late question because I wasn't aware the council meeting was on the first venice day of the month, so because of the changes. Anyway, my question is as follows: in light of the recent reporting in the press of the CAS scheme signs from £483,000 to £981,000 in the increase of the cost, can I ask, can the council consider the cost of the grounds for the hackney carriage and private hire in same line as well? Because our costs have also increased from 50 to 60 per cent as well for buying the vehicles as well. So I'm asking for that consideration as well. And I think question two is in line with that as well, which is in writing. My other question is, on question three, is that the CAS team, we are sending various, several emails, I've sent it, other colleagues as well in the trade, no one is responding to the emails from the Clean Air Zone team as well and the officer, I won't mention the name in here, but the officer is named in my question. Also, question four, what steps is the council taking to stop cross-border vehicles using our bus lane and bus gates in Sheffield when they are licensed somewhere else and we're using our bus gates and bus lanes? In Southampton, they have adopted this policy only for the local taxis using that. Also, question five, what steps is the council taking to stop cross-border working in Sheffield predominantly? Vehicle licensed in other areas, just come and work in Sheffield and don't go back where they live in Sheffield. And what's more strange is that we have vehicles now licensed in Wolverhampton, work in Sheffield, work with Sheffield private hire operators, and they get their vehicles tested in Sheffield. And in Sheffield, me as a licensed driver for 34 years, I don't have a choice, which they have. They can get tested in Sheffield and in Rotherham at a lower cost and have a choice. Why can't I not have that choice, the council, to consider approved test centres just like Wolverhampton have, and give me that choice as well, which is approved and above standard as well? So please consider my questions and I will attend the 15th of June meeting, councillor Ikbal. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Ibra. Thank you for your questions. May I call upon councillor Mazza Ikbal to give an initial response?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Ibra, for coming in today. Just a bit of background, I was running late this afternoon, so I got on a taxi express from where I live, and the first question I asked the driver was, how's work? He says, Maz, you're the first job after two and a half hours, so that just demonstrates how difficult it is out there. I know councillor Fox, the leader of the council, has met with yourself and a number of the, I know he's met with yourself last year or earlier this year, and I know councillor Fox has also had regular discussions with the various unions that have highlighted these issues and they need to be fed back to our licensing committee. Regarding the Clean Air Zone, we've heard the comments from the mayor of the Manchester Combined Authority, and we are picking up similar issues here in Sheffield regarding the impact that it's not just having on drivers, but also the economic impact it will have on businesses. So through you, Lord Mayor, I would like to take the Clean Air Zone conversation to the committee. I did speak to our officer, Tom Finigan Smith, who's speaking to the minister this afternoon, and I did say you'd written in, so it gave me an opportunity to say to him, look, we do have some serious concerns, it's very important we address quality, but not on the back of businesses having to close, having a huge impact on livelihoods. And it was councillor Talib who brought it to my attention today, saying, you know, he's picking up similar concerns, and hopefully we'll get you a written response, and I look forward to seeing you again at the committee. You don't really need to come down because I'll provide you with a written response, but if you feel like you need to come down, you're more than welcome. Thank you, through you, Lord.
Lord Mayor, if I may, I do need to do this again.
Is this a point of order?
Well, it is really, that licensing is under Waste and Streets in committee and not Transport Committee, and therefore it would have been a more appropriate question to refer this way. Now, I'm reasonably happy with the answer the councillor Ikbal has given, I will say. Sorry, I'll stand up. We know each other, don't we, from your representation to the licensing committee, and I hope you recognise that I and others on that committee did recognise the difficult position hackney carriage drivers were in when we were reviewing the fairs earlier this year. I'm happy to work with councillor Ikbal and with the licensing committee to make sure that we take your points on board, and I'm happy to meet with you, obviously. And I think we need as a council to work out, because it's slightly odd that we have licensing policy goes to the licensing committee and then Waste and Streets in committee and then comes a full council, and maybe, you know, we need to speed that up somehow and just have a conversation more in one place with people like yourselves. So I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Yes, perhaps we could have the Strategy and Resources Committee to resolve that. Thank you, Paul. Right, that concludes this item of business. Thank you all who have come with questions and petitions, and I think we know of two committees what their workload is this year. So I'm going to move on. Oh, if you've misrepresented and you'd like to correct that, then please do come to the microphone.
I just, I promised the people on Norfolk Road who signed the petition, there were about half of them who signed, who said it was basically understanding that we did not want it in its present form, but they do definitely want something.
Thank you, that's very fair of you to do that. Thank you very much. Right, we're now on Members' Questions, and we have half an hour for this. And I seem to have put, thank you so much, I don't know who that was, but that's £5 to the Lord Mayor's Fund. That makes such a change for it not to be you, councillor Rooney. Okay. Questions on urgent business, there are no questions on urgent business, so we move on to 5.2.
Lord Mayor, can I have a clean play?
I'm just going to continue this while you boys play by yourselves over there. Right, 5.2, questions on the joint authorities. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members of the council to ask questions on the discharge of the functions of the South Yorkshire Joint Authorities for fire and rescue and pensions and of the South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authorities. Are there any questions relating to these authorities? In which case we will move on to 5.3, which is the questions which have been submitted. You should all have received them in written form, and so if anybody has supplementary questions, I'm going to go through this page by page. So page one, councillor Masters caught my eye first, councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, I've seen the answer. Councillor Fox, you must be as pleased as I am, you as an ex-miner and me as an ex-geologist, that the mine, heat, water in the old mine workings in Sheffield and the area can be used to support our reduction in, or help towards climate change. Now, when I presented that amendment last October, I also added another initiative that I asked the council to look at, and the council agreed, which was about sort of using mini turbines, vertical turbines on street lamp posts, again, to sort of reduce our energy demands. This has been taken on by other councils. Is there any progress on any of the other initiatives that were mentioned in the amendment? And I'll give credit to councillor Brian Lodge, he also mentioned that we could use our waterways as in the past to generate power to reduce our climate burden. Thank you.
Councillor Fox?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Masters. All I can say in this new world is I look forward to initiatives that come out of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Change Committee. We will look at that through the Strategic Resources Committee, and I look forward to the Finance Subcommittee reporting back. But in all seriousness, yes, we are exploring every avenue to look at how we can kind of limit any energy use, but also the cost of... limit any energy use, but also the cost of energy as well.
Thank you. Councillor Mohammed has caught my eye.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. It's, I don't know, it's the top question, you don't have a number. It's about council tax collection, councillor Fox, and thank you for your answer, by the way. Within it, it talks about two elements. One, it says that the council tax service, there's a review currently underway. So the question is, when was that review likely to report back? And there's a second element here, answer, which talks about increasing the capacity at the call centre to deal with customer calls. Can you tell the full council how many people we are looking to recruit to the call centre? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Shaffack for the question as well. Again, not tongue-in-cheek, but I await the report back from the Finance Subcommittee, which I believe will be looking at council tax and also about the call centre with this customer experience. Thank you.
Page two, page three, page four. Thank you councillor Hocken.
Right, thank you. Thank you for that response. Can the plan, can this, just wait, so I've written it down here, I've written it down somewhere else. Can the review of the project for the external power be considered at Bolhills Pavilion be considered as soon as possible by the Parks and Leisure Policy Committee as the rebuild
Sorry. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Tim, for your first question and your subsequent one. The answer was yes. But I will be a little more comprehensive. Yeah, I thought you might have gone there. Briefly, yes, we don't want to miss the opportunity of getting something done in a very cost-effective way. The problem I have is that our committee meets on the 13th of June and I don't know how feasible it is to get a decent report put together for that. It's a week on Monday. If we can do it, I'll ask the officers, but it's better to have a good report than a rushed report. Is that okay?
And that's why we all love the new committee system. Right, page five, page six, page seven. Oh, which page, Sophie? Yep.
Thank you for your response councillor Johnson. In February, your predecessor councillor Wood did actually get me the breakdown of figures for the number of people in temporary accommodation due to council house disrepair. And so as you've said, you don't currently have a figure for that. You should be able to get those figures to me because they have been supplied to me before. And there were 30 families in February that were currently under temporary accommodation due to council house disrepair. I was wondering if you could report back to me on their status? And also with the 500 families that are in temporary accommodation, obviously that is completely regrettable and will be down to many reasons, such as antisocial behaviour, the cost of living crisis and indeed council house disrepair. Can you let me know how long they've been in there, why and what support is being given to them to make sure that we can make sure that they've got a safe roof over their heads going forward? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Yeah, thanks, not a problem, I'll take this away. I'm not surprised, I can't give you an answer right now, so I'll ask if we can do that. Just help me, could you drop an email, just send that out so I don't have to record?
Page eight, page nine. Oh, Tim caught my eye, Shafak.
I'm over here, that's why. Can I say, particularly on question three of my questions, can I ask, wouldn't it be better to listen rather than talk throughout the meeting? Because as members of the public, we are keen for them to come along and ask questions and be listened to. As Kate McDonald has said up there, there's lots of questions people have to ask and we need them to listen.
Sorry, was that a general observation there, Tim?
Because I presume it's councillor Iqbal who's going to come along. Will he come along and pledge to listen rather than speak at the whole meeting?
Right. I will take that as a rhetorical question. Councillor Mohammed?
Thank you, thank you. I assume it'll be councillor Iqbal or councillor Growcott? For your answer in terms of the city council has only funded 28 cycle storage spaces in total last year and none in the city centre. Any chance you can provide a list of where these 28 actually are, councillors Growcott or Iqbal? Thank you.
On this section of the agenda, it is councillor Growcott who's going to be answering.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And funnily enough, I have asked for someone new to bridge, so I'm hoping that they will be on the list. But yes, of course, I will get the list and if other members want it, I'm happy to circulate it around all councils. It may be useful information for those who have. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Growcott. I think everyone would like to see that answer. Where are we now? Page 10? Come in, sorry. Sorry, councillor Crossland, I have my lovely assistant here.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry if I get the process wrong, I'm more used to asking questions from up there than down here. So as many in the chamber know, speeding is quite important to me, so thank you for the update on the baiting 20 mile per hour zone. But as a new member, would you be able to give me a comprehensive update and a bit of a briefing on the scheme? Because I'm very eager for this moves forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you, councillor Growcott.
Yeah, councillor Crossland, welcome. It's lovely to see you down in the chamber. Glad you finally made it and yes, that's not a problem, we can get officers to give you a comprehensive briefing and then if you have any outstanding issues, you take them off and make sure that you get the information you require. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
So are you supplementing again, Curtis? Okay.
Sorry. So residents around River Valley have been waiting years, if not decades, for something to be done to tackle the parking issues there. So while I'm happy that something is finally moving forward, what I want is substance and not more hot air. So can we get some dates as to when the next milestone of this project will be hit, please? Thank you.
Councillor Growcott?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. This was something that I started when I had a very brief spell in this portfolio previously. So it is a little bit disappointing to see that it's still there and not been completed yet. So I'm more than happy to have a word with officers and find out exactly where we are. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Page 11, page 12.
Lord Mayor?
Councillor Fitz?
I've actually got ahead of myself, it's page 13, but it's all me, so I presume that's all right.
I might have wanted to call the councillor Mohammed.
It's true, I've nipped in ahead again, sorry. So thank you for your response to question seven around the workplace parking levy. It really welcomed it. Can I take that as a yes, that you will investigate the workplace parking levy in the Transport Committee? Thank you.
Julie?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll refer to the answer that councillor Fox gave a while ago. If my committee wants us to look at that, then my committee will look at that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Right. You're going to have to lobby the entire committee, I believe, councillor Fitz. Page 13, so page 14.
Right, this is good to hear that there is a trial that's now in the offing on the food waste collection, given that we are going to be forced to do it at some point. And it's good that we've been pushing for it on this side of the chamber over many years. When is the proposed date for a charter commence to be considered by the committee? Do we have any idea on dates?
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, no, I quite agree with your comments. It's been a long time in coming. I'm expecting a report to come to the Waste and Streets Committee in September with details on the trial. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
June, no, it says June. It does. Something else is coming in September, which is even better.
I think we'll all be very excited, wondering what that's going to be now, councillor. Okay, we have actually finished this ahead of time. So I am going to use this opportunity for us all to have a comfort break. Hang on, I have to ask my lovelier assistant. You've got 10 minutes and as the old custom, there is tea and coffee in the conference room. Form an orderly queue and we'll be back in 10 minutes, everybody. Thank you. It's a notice of motion regarding supporting residents through the cost of living crisis. There's a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. And may I call on councillor Terry Fox to move the motion? Can I just add that movers of motions get three minutes? Everybody else, including movers of amendments, you get two minutes. So councillor Terry Fox, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On moving this motion, I don't intend to lecture anybody about not knowing or not being part of the cost of living and the crisis that this country and this city faces, which is too important a topic to play politics with, in my belief, Lord Mayor. We all pass the petrol stations, we all get our fuel bills and we all go to the shops and see how those food prices are escalating out of control. Lord Mayor, we believe that the cost of living crisis in this city is one of the biggest issues that we face as a council and as a city together. That is why even before the election, Lord Mayor, I asked officers to step up to make sure that we treat this as an incident control. Not because I was bigger or better than anyone, but I believe that by moving to this system that we've been moved today, we've already found that there are a number of blurred lines between committees, between portfolios, and what we cannot afford is for anything to drop through the cracks. And that is why, doing it in this way, we hear the same conversation and we're able to deal with the situations at hand. Lord Mayor, the Labour Party has called for the emergency budget and to put in, hit a number of collective decisions to correct this issue that is dealing right now. The government quite rightly say they've put billions in, but they're one offs. They're not going to take us through this crisis. Lord Mayor, if we can agree one thing in this city, and the one thing that I think we really need to be mindful on is those that are living in private rent. I believe we should be looking, as a council, as a city, as residents, at looking at what does a living rent mean for this city and how we can help. Because if we get this wrong, it'll only fall and put added pressure onto services throughout this organisation. That is why housing has to be around the table, that's why social services have to be around this table, that's why communities have to be around this table. That is why all and every one of us have a part to play in this, Lord Mayor. It really hit home just the other day when I was talking with friends who was telling me how their son wanted £20 transferring. They hadn't got it to the end of the month. They'd got bills they hadn't both been able to pay till the end of the month. These are working people, Lord Mayor. These are people that just, on their disposable income has been absolutely took away from them. Lord Mayor, they ask, how do we survive the escalating pressure? Lord Mayor, we've got to treat this as an incident. We've all got to stand up and shoulder this. And, Lord Mayor, for me, the one thing we need out of all of this is living rents for this city. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Fox. May I call on councillor Julie Growcott to second the motion? You may speak for up to two minutes, Julie.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In seconding this motion, we need to be in no doubt that families across our city have been struggling for some time. Firstly, there was austerity, then there was the global pandemic and now we have the cost of living crisis. With inflation at a height that hasn't been seen since 1982, it's unbelievable the situation that many families across our city find themselves in. Fortunately, as councillor Fox has already explained, here we are already working with families across the city with our partners in the VCF to make sure that we can work hard to look after the families who need it most. We pushed through a budget amendment back in March to ensure that homes can be more energy efficient, so that we can bring bills down, so that we can invest in our communities and we can have a food access plan to help people and support people who need the access to food. I find it quite bewildering that in 2022, we are using words and phrases like food bank, just about managing, working poor, food poverty and the cost of living crisis. It's awful and it's awful for the people across the city who are going through all of this right now. The cost of living crisis is not of the making of the people of Sheffield. Those who are affected most by it, many are hardworking men and women who are trying really hard to make ends meet, yet still they struggle. As local councillors, it's imperative that we work collectively in our new committee system so that we can make sure that we do the best for all of our citizens across Sheffield and make sure that we are responding effectively and properly to the needs of the people in this city. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Growcott. There are now three proposed amendments and these are numbers one, two and three on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Shafak Mohammed to move amendment one? You may speak for up to two minutes, Shafak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillors for actually debating this very important issue that's facing the residents of not just Sheffield but the country, if not the globe. Because at the moment, there is a national stroke, international crisis that's leading to riots in Sri Lanka elsewhere. And it's not something that we want to see either in our country or in our city where those who are desperate take to the streets. So therefore we need to act. And I think within ourselves here as council, we need to come together and unite behind asking some actions from government. So for example, in our amendment, we talk about taking £300 off families struggling by actually doubling and expanding the Warm Homes discount that people get. Similarly, we want to see a £1,000 boost for those on universal credit. And similarly, we want to see some action taken against corporations. So I think, I'm sure we can all unite behind those measures because clearly the government has to do more. It has to, like councillor Fox says, this is a national emergency and when there's an emergency, you need to bring people together for action. And similarly, we have a cost of living crisis here in the city council where actually, if you look at, on some of us that will be looking at this in more detail next week, the Finance Committee, if you look at the month one out term, which is a bit of a jargon, but basically gives you the state of play of the budget situation after the first month, we are on what, 18.7 million overspent? Do your maths, 18.7 divided by 30 is a big number, whether it's 400,000, 600,000, a lot of money. And what we're asking for is an emergency budget. I know within our amendment, we've been asked by officers to change it to an emergency financial recovery plan. I don't care what we call it, but if we do not get this budget under control, then there's only one thing that's going to stare this city down, which will be Conservative which will be Conservative government appointing their own commissioners to run this council like they did in Rotherham when they had the child grooming scandal or what's happening, what happened down in Slough when they actually ran out of money and the government came in. I don't want to see that, so that's why I think we need to come together to deal with this budget because this is an emergency for this council. Thank you.
May I call upon councillor Joe Otten to second this amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I thank councillor Fox for bringing this motion for us today. I'd like to say as a group, we support the initiative. We supported yesterday at Strategy and Resources, the establishment of this strategic gold group to look at the cost of living crisis and see what we can do about it as a council. I would suggest to all members on this council who are on policy committees, think about whether you want to serve on that group and your committee will be taking and making a nomination onto that committee. So if you think you've got something to add, please, please offer your services that way. The nature of our amendment is not to amend, but to amend a little bit, if you see what I mean. We're supportive of the idea. Our clause C, I think, because we talk about the reasons for the cost of living crisis and I think it's tempting to do the normal political thing of saying, well, if you're a Conservative saying, well, it's all the rest of the world, if you're a Conservative, all the rest of the world, and if you're not a Conservative saying, well, it's all the Conservative government, isn't it? And of course, there are multiple reasons and I'm not going to try and guess which are the bigger ones and which are the larger ones, but I've given what I think, we've given, what we think are some factual reasons behind the cost of living crisis. And it behooves us all, if we want to do something about it, maybe the levers aren't in Sheffield, but maybe the levers are in Parliament and we can lend pressure to understand the causes and to address them each in their different ways. So that's what we've tried to do with the C. The rest of the amendments, obviously, our party has called for a package of measures. There's not quite the same as the Labour Party's package. You know, it's not a violent disagreement, this is. We just have a different idea of how things might be done best to support people through this and that's what we've put in our amendment here and I'd ask you to support it. But I just want to say, you know, it's bad now. I'm terrified what the winter is going to bring with a higher energy price cap and, you know, winter demands on fuel heading our way. And, you know, if we don't get our act together by then, we're going to face a very, very bleak winter indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Otten. I have councillor Alexi Diamond, who will move amendment number two and you may speak for up to two minutes, Alexi.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I too, and the Green Party welcomes the motion on the cost of living crisis, or more accurately, the cost of greed crisis. Note, the wholesale price of gas in the UK has now collapsed, yet bills are still rising, which is currently the biggest concern and cause of hardship for our communities. The crisis has only accelerated under 12 years, following on from decades of neoliberalism, which has seen the wealth of the richest inside society increase exponentially, while the standard of living for the rest of the society has either stayed still or, in many cases, dramatically declined. However, I was concerned to read the assertion that the cost of living crisis is caused by low growth. Low growth did not cause the banking crisis, austerity, food banks, the war in Ukraine, the rise in fuel prices or the degradation of our environment. The problem is our current economic system, which prioritises growth above all else. Growth doesn't guarantee health or wellbeing. It doesn't guarantee shelter, education, jobs or a livable income. It was never designed to be a definitive measure of a good or successful society. What is needed in the 21st century is a new economic model based on meeting the needs of people and our collective access to food, shelter, health and wellbeing, while ensuring that we live within our planetary means and don't destroy the Earth's systems which sustain us and other species. Just recently, the UN warned that it is now or never to limit global heating to two degrees and that our current trajectory is a fast track to disaster. More economic growth is throwing free all on the fire and will result, at least figuratively speaking, in the sky falling on our heads, even on those people who don't look up. So I implore this council to support our amendment and motion, tackle the cost of living crisis and climate crisis, implement the climate impact assessment tool and take measures to lower people's bills by retrofitting homes and council buildings with solar panels and insulation as quickly as possible and also keep Sheffield's money in the local economy. Thank you.
May I call on councillor Brian Holmshaw to second this motion, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There are good, solid reasons for voting for this amendment and also for part of the substantive of the main motion. Unrestrained economic growth causes inequality, as Alexi has just been telling us. In the last 10 years, the wealth of billionaires has tripled, while we know that the value of our wages and our benefits have fallen. A certain director of public health tweeted recently that the number one biggest risk to health is neoliberal economic thinking and ideology. Had we tackled climate emergency sooner, we would have had more resilience in this city, less problems for energy, for cleaner energy independence and local food production will all help with our cost of living crisis. We tackle the climate emergency by building a better society because we know that social justice is inextricably linked to the climate emergency. I urge you to vote for this amendment.
Thank you, councillor Holmshaw. I now call upon Lewis Chin Chen to move the amendment number three. You may speak for up to two minutes, Lewis.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The motion is absolutely right that the cost of living is the biggest issue facing this country and households at the moment. Strong demand and global supply bottlenecks as part of the post-pandemic recovery and the invasion of Ukraine has led to significant price increases, notably in the food and energy markets. No government can stop these price increases, but it's right that the government takes action to mitigate the impact and relieve the pressure on households. The £37 billion support package is a substantial programme of public intervention and key measures are targeted at those on the lowest incomes. And the cumulative impact of the measures is significant. But of course, we will need to keep reviewing the situations, especially as we go into the winter. And no one's saying that the governments, partners in local governments, that this is the end, that they're one-off measures. Of course, we'll continue to review the situation and continue to enact measures as appropriate. But since this has been partly funded by windfall taxes, we know with key differences between those proposed by other parties, it's bigger in size, £5 billion in fact, and crucially, it will incentivise long-term investment in the energy market. And this is crucial by offering tax relief to companies that invest and that will drive down prices in the long run. But since we were elected to the city council rather than Parliament, it makes sense to discuss what we can do as councillors and measures to improve advice and access to financial support is, of course, welcome. And I welcome some of the other measures that councillors here today have proposed. And we now need to focus on the discretionary fund and getting that up and running and open to applications and use the increase in the household support fund to be even more proactive. But it will require central government, local government and partner agencies to work constructively to tackle this issue head on. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Right, for new members who are wondering, what is she doing? Formally seconding this amendment, we have a convention in this council that people who do not belong to groups that are bigger than themselves, so at the moment, that's councillor Chin Chen and, I've forgotten Sophie's surname, and councillor Wilson. So we have a convention that the Lord Mayor will always second any motion that they want to put up. So that's why I am formally seconding councillor Lewis Chin Chen's motion. So we now move to a debate on the matter. We've heard from everybody. I have only got four people who've put forward to speak. I hadn't realised we had such a shy group of councillors this time round. So I'm going to start with councillor Tony Dowling, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, for months, we've heard from families on the lowest incomes have had to make tough choices when doing their weekly food shop, putting items back on the shelves and at the till when hit with rising prices. The energy price cap in April could see energy bills go up by 50%, leaving millions of households in the UK frozen in the grip of fuel poverty, unable to heat their homes and afford their energy bills. Lord Mayor, around 10,000 people a year, on average, die as a result of fuel poverty. Citizens Advice tells us it is anticipating rising numbers of people in hardship seeking its support this winter. Low-income families have been hit by a triple whammy over £20 a week universal credit cut, soaring energy bills and rising inflation. Every day, we are seeing more and more families falling into crisis. Families who struggle to feed their children, keep their houses warm, pay the bills and cope with job losses, it is devastating. Right now, over 4 million children across the whole of the UK are growing up in poverty. Lord Mayor, it is disgraceful that today, in the sixth richest country in the world, this is happening, where working people are being forced to go to food banks in order to try and make ends meet, when at the same time, energy companies are making millions in profits. This Tory government have been shamed of doing a U-turn by introducing a windfall tax or is it a smokescreen to cover up their other failings? Lord Mayor, I support the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dowling. Councillor Bernard Little next and Sophie, you're on standby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to remind council that the reason why we have a cost of living crisis rests way beyond this council. It is happening because of the failure of governments to regulate global fuel and financial markets. The poorest and the most vulnerable are being hit the hardest, as we've heard. Many millions, both here and across the planet, will be left destitute. What is happening is profiteering on a grotesque and unprecedented scale, cheered on by the dogma of free market thinking and the belief that regulation is a hindrance to prosperity. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Little, and thank you for just using the time necessary. Councillor Thornton?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We can discuss the reasons for the cost of living crisis to the death. You know, we can say that it's the Conservative government's fault, it's the war in Ukraine's fault, it's everywhere, but ultimately, we do have a responsibility to our two other residents of Sheffield and me to talk about what we can actually do about it. I'm more than happy for us to point fingers and to say, that's something that's, you know, we can all say that, I think across the board, we can all agree that the government is not doing enough, that the war in Ukraine is causing fuel shortages and grain shortages that are hitting people the hardest. But right now, what we have is a situation that the citizens of Sheffield, the young people in Sheffield, tenants of Sheffield City Council are struggling to, you know, if we're going to see, when we're going towards winter, where it's going to get a lot colder, I know from speaking to residents in Beechfield and Greenall, that around winter, when there's more rain, everything, house repairs get more difficult, they get more complex. Now, looking at my questions and answers from earlier, there are only like 500 or 600 council properties that are undergoing works for insulation and damp prevention. As we come into winter, that is not good enough. We have tens of thousands of council tenants in Sheffield and only 500 of those properties are currently undergoing works for insulation. That is not good enough. If we actually want to get serious about cutting people's fuel bills ahead of winter, we need to get serious on this issue. And ultimately, it will be the people of Sheffield that will suffer if we do not balance this budget, if we do not get serious about insulating their properties and make sure that we do everything we can to not have Conservative government commissioners knocking on our door and taking that power out of our hands. We have a responsibility to the peoples of Sheffield and we can make a difference. Thank you.
And finally, our final speaker is councillor Brian Lodge. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We are sitting here today and we are facing a crisis, not just for the people of, the individual crisis that people are facing, but also here for the city. And as councillor Mohammed pointed out in the movement, moving his amendment, the financial position we find ourselves in, and be under no illusion, we need to do something and tackle this. And we are committed, I think, in the Strategy and Resources Committee meeting yesterday, I think there was general consensus and agreement there that we will all knuckle down and do something about this. But let's not just talk about it, let's look at things that we're doing and look at what we actually can do to achieve, as councillor Thornton said. And I'll tell you some things that are happening now. There are 6,000 properties in this city that are now getting new roofs because of our investment through the budget last year, 6,000 properties. I can walk around Burley Ward and I walk through Bay Screen, I walk through Burley, I walk through Hackenthorpe. There are new roofs going on the council stock all the way around there. And that's helping people, that's action that we're doing now, not talking about it, action we're doing now that's helping people out there. And we need to look at what else we can do. This city is suffering from gross underfunding by the government. We've lost a third, just about a third, of the actual funding that comes through from government and we've managed that over the last 12 years and we've managed it the best we can. But we are now in the position that we've got to look at things. And, you know, the people of Sheffield, it is an overspend at the moment. It's an overspend that's projected by the year end and that's because some of the budget proposals that will be implemented this year have not been brought forward yet. So we recognise that those are going to do and I'm convinced that the chairs of the committees, the councillors on the committees will work with the services to reduce that overspend that's in there. But it's not going to be easy. But we've got to look at what we can do to accelerate it and improve things for the people of Sheffield, delivering on what we promised out there. We need to look at what the priorities are. We need to look at social care, adult social care, children's social care. And we've got to make sure that we're protecting the most vulnerable in this city. We need to set the priorities, we need to set the priorities for our budget and make the best that we can in spite, in spite of the cuts that are forced on us and the severe underfunding that's coming through from central government. And we should all be speaking to our MPs and making representations down there that Sheffield deserves a proper funding settlement that allows us, as 84 councillors in here, to deliver for the people of Sheffield. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Right, that concludes all the speeches. So I'm now going to give the write-up reply to councillor Terry Fox, who has up to two minutes to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks to everybody who took part in this debate. And just as councillor Lodge says, it's about the year and now and it's about dealing. This council is putting nearly £8.4 million into hardship funds through council tax, through our hardship and our grants. That is what we're paying out and that's what we are on delivering. We're putting a financial support action plan and rolling that out across the city with our partners, community organisations. We put money into the likes so that we can pick up that local intelligence to help those on the most need and in our communities. We put extra money into a food access plan because we were aware very early on about the need out there. and how we can work with other communities and food banks with the access. And councillors here and us have been helping put that food access plan out. We're putting money into South Yorkshire Community Foundation Fund and where donations can go and people can bid into that. We're also putting our three and a half million pounds that we took through because we knew that energy prices were getting out of town. We knew that we had to look at other sustainable methods of eat and energy. And we're rolling that out through community buildings, et cetera. But also, as councillor Lodge says, there's 6,000 properties that need lifting into EPC C-level. And we are putting through over the next five years, 53 million pounds that went through council board last year through the HRA to deliver that insulation and that absolute need of boiler replacements, et cetera. Lord Mayor, we have to cope this challenge, but it's not enough. We need more. And we have to plead to government to give Sheffield a fair settlement. But we must, we must, and I reiterate this, we must get a living rent that people in this city can afford, that no one should have to live on the streets. Michaelia, the fantastic work that parish nurses are doing and other organisations, I went with their last Lord Mayor to that meeting with Denise, it's amazing what's been done. And finally, Lord Mayor, if ever we needed any more information, Eileen Turner came today in her wheelchair disability. That's where the cuts, that's where it hurts on the front end, Lord Mayor. That's all the people we should be helping through this city. Lord Mayor, I hope everybody supports our notice of motion today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fox. I'm now going to vote, move to a vote on amendment number one, which was moved by councillor Shafak Mohammed and which we're going to conduct using the electronic voting system, unless, unless we have unanimous support for that amendment.
Dismissed, Lord Mayor.
Right, so there isn't, therefore we will move to a vote. Can you put the voting stuff on, please?
Lord Mayor, can we vote in parts on this amendment?
Yes.
In voting against this amendment, we are voting for two F and two H.
Thank you. Little blue person. Little red person. Oh my goodness. Oh, just piped at the post. Okay, it would appear we have 75 in the room and 74 people have voted. Anybody abstaining from abstaining? No, I had a vote.
Lewis, well, the numbers in there fit with the party group.
Oh, right, councillor Turpin has left. Have we already recognised that?
Yeah, it wouldn't be showing on there.
Well, I can't, I can't make people vote. Right, I can't make people vote. So that amendment is lost, but, but two F and H from that amendment have been carried. Right, so I'm now going to move to amendment, gracious me, all these seem to say amendment one, let me just get here. Thank you. We're now going to move to the vote on amendment number two, moved by councillor Alexei Diamond, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment, which we don't. Are there any moves?
Voting in parts, please, Lord Mayor.
Yep.
In abstaining, we'll be voting against R.
Against R.
Yeah, but abstaining overall. Okay, if everybody can vote, please. Blue person, then a vote. So.
Could you also report the numbers just to there?
Oh, right. Okay. Has everybody voted? In which case, the amendment is lost, 413 against 35 abstentions, 26. So that falls. I'm now going to move on to the amendment number three, which was moved by councillor Lewis Chin Chen, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. I'm afraid we don't, Lewis. Right, in which case we will move to a vote.
Can we vote?
Oh, sorry.
Lord Mayor, can we vote in parts on this?
Yes.
So in voting against this, we are voting for I.
For I.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, right, if we can all vote, please. Oh.
Somebody's pressed it on one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lewis. I shouldn't have read out those instructions about change. Is that, how's that?
We've got 72, we've got 74 registered, we've got three broadcast. So there's a present, someone's registered present, but then I haven't voted. That's what that one's indicating. This don't include those that are out of the room because they should have had their thing.
So, okay. So I'm afraid the amendment is lost. There was one for, 72 against, and one person didn't vote. Right, so I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the motion. Right, in which case we will go to a vote.
Voting in parts, please, Lord Mayor.
Okay.
In abstaining, we'll be voting for A and B, D and E and the two F and two H from the lit- the amendments.
Okay. Did you get this? Okay, in which case everybody.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, did you have parts as well?
Lord Mayor, yeah, can we vote in parts as well? So in voting for, we're for the motion, but against C and I from the substantive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah? Right. Does that make sense?
The Greens are voting for. They're saying that Labour are agreeing for everything.
It's all passed on, isn't it?
They're abstaining. So the Greens are against.
But it's overwhelmingly.
C and I, yeah, but they voted in parts.
Okay.
So we need any combination to so that that's carried, but C and I, they're voting against. They've abstained.
26, wasn't it?
But for John from CNN, I think C and I have lost.
But if they have just abstained, then they don't count, then.
Yeah, very good point. So they're abstaining, so it's just a case of those that carry the vote. Sorry.
All right. Okay, the substantive motion is overwhelmingly passed, 47 for, 26 against and no, oh, sorry, and nobody against and 26 abstentions. So thank you all very much. Interesting voting here with our electronics up. So far, it's so good. That's a really dangerous thing to have said, isn't it? Right, if we move to item number seven, notice of motion regarding building the local business base. There's a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. And may I call on councillor Shafak Mohammed to move the motion? And you may speak for up to three minutes, councillor Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, our notice of motion builds upon the first notice of motion by councillor Fox in terms of looking at the economic situation here in Sheffield. And I want to kind of actually say that the economic prosperity of the city is linked to the prosperity of our council as well. Because one of the big changes that we've seen in recent years is that the retention of business rates. So, Lord Mayor, let's be clear in this chamber that as our city comes out of Covid and tries to grow, and it needs to grow, there may be some councillors here that don't like growth, but I want to make it very clear that actually, for our economic wellbeing, but also our environmental wellbeing, that actually growth is actually part of the mix. So we want to see businesses grow that are already in Sheffield. But we also want to attract businesses regardless of their size. Because we have to have big and small businesses here, because what happens? It gives people jobs, it puts money into their pockets, and more importantly, it gives us as a council that extra business rate income that we badly need to balance our books and provide those invaluable services to our young and our old and the most needy in society. Because without that, we as a city are going to struggle. So, Lord Mayor, we have to be very careful about how we actually go about setting policy in this city. And in particular, we want to make connectivity important, whether it's digital connectivity or transport links. They are important for all parts of our city to get it into the centre. And I want council to think long and hard about actually, some of the policies that we come up with, will they actually hinder our potential growth? So, for example, I want us to think long and hard about any road closures that we may have. For example, in the city centre, and actually look at the impact it will have on all sections of society. Because I know previously, Lord Mayor, we've had people here who've challenged senior councillors about mobility issues and challenged councillor or councillor or councillors to wheel a wheelchair from down the road up here. I hitherto don't know whether that's actually happened. But seriously, Lord Mayor, if we are to actually have an inclusive city, then we need to be mindful that some decisions that might look good on paper, what are the actual impacts? And we need to think long and hard. So as a city, what have we actually got to offer? We are centrally based within our nation here. We have great potential, we have a fantastic heritage for manufacturing, et cetera, we can build upon that. But, Lord Mayor, we have to attract businesses, and I will play my part in supporting any efforts. And I'm sure my colleague councillor Martin Smith, who would have been here due to illness, he would have said the same, that we have to actually send a clear message to the world that we are open for business and we are here willing and waiting for businesses to come to Sheffield so we can actually get them to come here, give us jobs, but more importantly, give us the business rates to balance our budget. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry for going over.
Crouching as you continue speaking isn't stopping, is it? Right, councillor Masters, will you second this, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We use our culture to draw people into Sheffield and spend their money here. It supports local businesses, especially the many independent, small, medium and local businesses in our hospitality sector. They've been hard hit by the pandemic, and now the significant increases in running costs threaten the future of those that survived. Without them, what would Sheffield have to offer visitors to events like the World Snooker, tram lines, cliffhanger? But events are just that, time-limited attractions to bring in people and their money. Sheffield's dire financial position and the steep cost of living increases mean we will have less disposable income to spend in our pubs, restaurants, cafes and on attractions. If they go, so do the jobs and the appeal of Sheffield as a destination for inward investment and to visitors accelerating our decline. These businesses need support while we widen our economic base, and we have an untapped resource which could do that. Sheffield's heritage, in its widest sense, has the potential to play a key part in our economic recovery. Look at what's here, history stretching back millennia, our landscape shaped by geology, water and coal, buildings which map out our industrial development, the birthplace of football, the home of great social reformers and so much more. Sheffield is uniquely rich in its physical environment and the breadth of its heritage. Joined Up Heritage Sheffield, we've heard from already, has a strategy for utilising the economic value of our heritage, showing what is possible. Yet we don't even have a tourist information centre. It's time the council had a strategy as well. Heritage and hospitality support each other. They provide opportunities and trailing for people of all skills levels. What is lacking is a framework to allow these to be coordinated and become a force in Sheffield's economy. So I commend our motion calling for building the local business base. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Masters. There are now two proposed amendments, and these are numbers four and five on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call on councillor Minesh Parek to move amendment number four? You may speak for up to two minutes. And can I just, whoa? You were trying to catch my eye? Okay. Sorry, Minesh, and it's just to say that this will be his maiden speech, so lots of applause at the end, please.
Lord Mayor, I thank you for the opportunity to propose this amendment and make my maiden speech to the council while doing so. Council, there is a great need to rebuild our local economy, particularly following the Covid-19 pandemic, which both shone a light, a spotlight on and exacerbated inequality. The original motion spoke to the council's projected overspend and the difficult situation local authorities across the country are in since the introduction of austerity, due to the fact that we here faced a 50% budget cut in real terms since 2010. But after every crisis, there's a window of opportunity to not just recover, but to fix the root causes of that crisis. And, Lord Mayor, that's what this amendment proposes. Community wealth building is a strategy to intervene in and redirect wealth back into our local economy, to ensure that as much public spending as possible goes to local people and local businesses. The amendment notes that in the 12 months prior to the pandemic, we kept an extra £80 million in the Sheffield economy because of our public procurement policies by prioritising our local economy over multinational companies. And we can go so much further. I'm sure that I can safely say that this council is united in its commitment to tackling social inequality. I'm sure that I can safely say that this council is united in its commitment to tackling social inequality, to ensuring fair employment practices across the city, and in tackling climate crisis. For a community wealth building strategy, we can reward local businesses, cooperatives and social enterprises that are committed to economic justice and reaching net zero. As a proud cooperator, committed to the redistribution of wealth and power, we should look to work with South Yorkshire Ownership Hub to support the development of new cooperatives and encourage plural ownership in our local economy. And by developing a community wealth building charter and enhancing our ethical procurement strategy, we could not only speed up our economic recovery, but do so in a way that works for local people, for our local economy and for the planet. Therefore, Lord Mayor, I'm asking for this council to support this amendment to enhance our commitment to social, economic and climate justice. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parek, and I do hope your mum is watching this. Right. May I call on councillor Fran Belbin to second the amendment?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I'm really pleased to be seconding this amendment that was proposed by my new Labour and cooperative member, councillor Parek. And I'd like to congratulate him on his maiden speech as well. Councillor Parek has described some of the economic benefits that are brought to the city of community wealth building as a means of stimulating the local economy and how procuring ethically through local businesses and keeping money circulating locally, we can support the creation of good quality jobs that pay the real living wage. I want to focus a little on the partnership aspect of community wealth building, because growing the local economy isn't just the role of the individual businesses or of the council. It's about bringing in partners across the city to work on this approach. It's about pooling the capacity of our large organisations, our universities, our health services and other anchor organisations to develop relevant skills across the city, perhaps working with health institutions to develop new models of social care, as an example. And I hope people will support the motion we have later on the GMB Care Charter, which starts to look at some of those different approaches. In Sheffield, we've also got a huge voluntary sector, and it would be great to be collaborating with them, to be creating more community based businesses, cooperatives and social enterprises. And we also have the opportunity to work regionally with organisations and businesses. And this is an approach that's really supported by the new mayor for South Yorkshire. Now, of course, calling for increased partnership between the public sector and the private sector is nothing new, although I would argue that some of the previous attempts to do it through initiatives such as PFI have not put the needs of our citizens at the forefront. But during the pandemic, we did see how businesses and institutions, the council, the voluntary sector, could all work really collaboratively to the benefit of everybody across the city. And community wealth building is about that. It's about putting people at the heart of what we're doing. And it's about working with our people, our communities and our businesses to deliver for the people of Sheffield.
Thank you, councillor Belbin. I now call on councillor Douglas Johnson to move amendment five. And you may speak for up to two minutes, Douglas.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations, first of all, to councillor Parek. Good to hear your first speech in the council. And also good to see there's quite a degree of cross-party agreement here. Dare say that some of it will come together. It's interesting to see this working in the cross party. It'll be interesting to see when this gets committed so we can see how we can resolve some of these issues that we've identified today with all three parties there. The point I need to make is that not all business is the same. And we can't just have a blanket support for business without distinguishing between, you know, those businesses that are better and support the city and those which do some harm. So, for instance, I don't have much truck with the likes of fracking businesses, nor the big energy companies that have put up bills and drink the cost of a living crisis, nor companies like arms manufacturers, nor those that make their money out of gambling. Just a few years ago, I was thinking about the gambling policy. The gambling policy actually says that the council recognises how important this sector of the entertainment industry is. And there's something I raised in the review of the gambling policy, and the policy no longer says that. I'm pleased to say it was removed. But there are many businesses and startups that are coming on stream and would really like to support in Sheffield. And interestingly, one of the outcomes of the pandemic has been such a shift in the pattern of work that people go through, has been a renewed interest really in the number of people thinking that they can start up the dream that they've always wanted to do. And as I say, that is brilliant. That is economic wellbeing, it's focused on people, not on GDP. So as a council, we must do more to start these startups. I understand we're significantly behind most of the core cities on startups. I need apparently nearly a thousand new startups every year to just get up to the average of core cities. So anything we do to support that has got to be welcomed, so thank you.
And can I call on councillor Peter Garbutt to second the amendment?
Judge, Lord Mayor. We live in interesting times. Brexit is an extraordinary act of national self-harm, and it's hit businesses hard. Mainly big businesses, because they are more vulnerable to the national and international economic hits. Covid, an unexpected and tragic event, made so much worse by the inept handling of the pandemic by the government. Again, businesses were hit hard, especially smaller businesses, because they don't have the financial clout to see themselves through. The war in Ukraine, which has revealed the fragility of a system relying on near monopoly suppliers. The climate and biodiversity emergencies, which will increasingly impact on our food supplies, creating knock-ons for other businesses. All of these call on local authorities to build in resilience to local businesses, not relying on distant boardrooms, not siphoning off profits to distant shareholders. Lord Mayor, we need to do more than bolster our local businesses. We need to build a thriving circular economy. I commend this amendment.
Thank you. Succinct and still on the green. Well done. Or is that a party policy? Right, we're now going to move to a debate on the motion. I'm going to start with councillor Richard Shaw.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Obviously, I would like to support the motion. We have many wonderful local businesses in Sheffield, both in the city centre and communities across the city, from Ecclesfield to Ecclesall, from Brightside down to Beecher. Local shops and district centres are the cause of our communities. And we should, of course, do all we can to support them and help those businesses to thrive. We've talked already about the cost of living in a previous motion. And part of that includes transport poverty. Like, I imagine many councillors here, I represent a ward with, you know, several deprived communities. And like Sheffield as a whole, one in three households don't have access to a car. Many reliant upon expensive unreliable buses to get to shops and to work and for education. And for those who do have access to a car, the costs take up a significant portion of their already low incomes, reducing their disposable income to spend in local businesses and so forth. A couple of months ago, we promoted fifteen minute neighbourhoods to help improve transport links around local areas to, you know, to help people shop more locally and things. And one side of that is that if people don't have to use a car or so on in order to access these basic amenities to get to local businesses, they will have more disposable income to spend in our local shops, as well as reducing the other costs so that we can cope with rising energy prices and so on. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Dead on the red. Can I just remind members that we do have a convention that if we've just heard a maiden speech, we do congratulate the person, all the speakers in this debate. And just remind you, please. Thank you. Can I move on to councillor Alexei Diamond?
Thank you. Thanks, Lord Mayor. Congratulations to councillor Parek for his great speech. I think there's some good things in both of the amendments. And I'd just like to remind everybody that good transport links does not mean more cars. Transport is the lubrication of the economy. And good transport means more public transport and more active travel and less traffic jams. And this needs investment. A workplace parking levy would mean upwards of ten million investment in transport every year. It was piloted as a great success by Labour council in Nottingham. Why are so many councillors in this chamber so vehemently opposed?
My goodness, everybody's succinct this afternoon. This is going to be a good year at this, right? Can I ask councillor Mick Rooney? I'm going to ask you to actually speak, Mick.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was considering not speaking at one moment, but I think I will. Yes, you're right, it is an afternoon for brevity, and that's not always a bad thing. And I'm going to mention just a couple of things. One is that over the years, we've had sort of attacks of collective amnesia by certain sections of the council's membership. Most of it involving five years of being in government with the Conservatives. And that seemed to get forgotten about, and it seems to have been forgotten about again this afternoon. Maybe you'll recover from it and one day wake up to the reality that you were part of that government and part of the reason that we've got so many poor people in this city. The other is, I mean, I'd really like an explanation from the Greens, which is about the first part of their amendment, which says, remove the real threat of commissioners being appointed by the government to take over the running of this council. Could one of you explain to me, do you not believe that to be true? Do you not accept the advice of the senior members or the senior officers of this council? Do you think they're telling lies? Do you think they're just doing it to wind you up? Or whatever? Because as far as the rest of us in this council are concerned, that is a reality. And trying to scrub it out, delete it, erase it from a notice of motion is not going to change the reality of what you almost did last week when you voted in the way that you did. So I think the least you owe this chamber and the people of this city is an explanation why you think that is not a real threat.
Thank you. Councillor Tim Huggan, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations, councillor Parek, for your maiden speech. What I want to say, so much to say, so little happening. Just response to councillor Rooney, if you hadn't marched off into the wilderness for the second time in my lifetime, perhaps we wouldn't have a Tory government. As we come to the end of seven years of Tory rule, we need not only to attract business, we need to attract the money, we need to attract business in Sheffield. And Sheffield hasn't looked like a city in the past where we're welcoming of business. You know, startup businesses, you know, I saw the figures, we're a thousand short and we're very low down in the city. I see councillor Ichabao, you want to have another word to say if you haven't had enough already. So we need to make sure that we're accommodating, you know, to business from outside. Community wealth building is a great thing, but it will only contribute a fraction of what we need to expand our business rate base in Sheffield. We need to make sure that we're an outward looking city, that we're attracting business within and expanding the local economy, and we need to set ourselves up. And we've got that chance now to do it. I commend this motion as the basis for the way forward for Sheffield and for this city in the future. Many thanks.
A green light again. This is unheard of, I think. I'm sure the previous Lord Mayor would have delighted in this. And our final speaker, before I ask you to sum up, sorry, is councillor Terry Fox.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, can I congratulate Minesh on a cracking maiden speech, I have to say. One of the best I've heard, and very succinct and nailed the points. I think, Lord Mayor, as an authority, we have to really look at what we are doing and what we've already got in place before we go scatter good in a place. We have an ethical procurement strategy in place. We already keep within our procurement eighty million pounds in the local economy. Fifty per cent of all council contracts go to local firms. Myself and councillor Mark Jones had a webinar, I believe, back end of last year, where we invited and we talked about what did that procurement do for our city, for our small, medium enterprises? How we upskilled those workforces, those companies, so that they were able to get onto that supply contract? We've enabled hundreds of apprentices to get jobs and long quality, long term jobs. We've provided firms with the real living wage. Let's not underestimate what this authority can do in the right direction of an administration. And I accept we have to go further. But it was this authority that took that brave decision when we did the Peace Gardens, when we did St Paul's. The opposition were calling us from pigs to dogs. We're now doing the Art of the City, four hundred and fifty million pounds. We are continually striving to make Sheffield a better, fair, inclusive city for everyone. Lord Mayor, those small businesses outside who are striving to get on and upskill the workforce around the place, look for us to make sure that we set the lead and the targets. Yes, we're under pressure, Lord Mayor, but we are actually delivering art in our communities. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Fox. And now can I call upon councillor Shafak Mohammed to sum up? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, congratulations to councillor Parek on your maiden speech. Just a word of warning, the applause that you get first time round doesn't ever happen again. So lap it up today, because next time you'll probably be getting boos and jeers and God knows what else. So well done on your speech, by the way. Clearly, look, I think there's a lot to agree on, and I think, you know, welcome the additions from Labour in terms of their amendment as opposed to delete all that we often see. So clearly, there's elements within what we've submitted that I hope Labour colleagues can vote for. I have to take councillor Diamonds to task to say that he's such a cheerleader for the workplace parking levy. Have you actually been outside? Have you actually seen the situation that the city centre is in at the moment? And you really think that additional levy is exactly what businesses in this city centre actually read right now? Are you serious? Because that is quite a dangerous thing to actually send a message out to anyone who wants to invest, whether it's inside the city centre or elsewhere, that actually the city councils are here right at the moment where the entire world is facing a financial crisis, that there's politicians in this city that... crisis, that there's politicians in this city that think adding more taxes to people is the way forward. Yes, Nottingham may have done it, but when did they do it? They've not done it in an economic crisis, have they? And for me, you know, the test is, if it was so good, why haven't, you know, dozens of other councillors done it, councillor Diamonds? Yeah? So therefore, if that's what you want to do, take it to the Transport Committee and argue your case. I doubt you're going to get far, because you didn't get far with the negotiations you had with either parties when we were trying to form a potential coalition or partnership, as we called it. And it is about, actually, where we go forward, look forward. And yes, councillor Rooney, you can look backwards 10 years, but it's been three general elections since that coalition has formed. We could talk about it, I'm sure you could have a big massive debate with councillor Roger Davidson about the history of it, but actually we need to look forward and how do we actually rebuild our city. So please vote for our motion, I think we'll be supporting quite a bit of the other amendments. Thank you.
All those succinct people and Shafak. Let's get on with the business of the day that we have here. So I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number four, which was moved by councillor Minas Parek. And this will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. You've stunned them into silence there, Minas, haven't you?
Please come again, Minas.
I will take silence as the affirmation of the meeting. Right. Right, that amendment was carried unanimously. It'll be in the minutes if you'd sent it, your mum. Right, I'm told I'm on page 31 now, sorry. Amendment five, I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment five, which was moved by councillor Douglas Johnson, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. Okay, we have had dissent on that, so please, can I ask you all to press your...
Lord Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Lord Mayor, could I vote in parts? Could we vote in parts, please?
Yes.
In voting for the amendment, we are abstaining on point one, we are voting against point two and point three, I and J. I'm sorry.
Can you say that last bit again?
So let me say it again. In voting for the amendment, we are abstaining on point one, voting against point two and points three, I and J.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Right, press your blue person and vote. Okay, colleagues, I am advised that this amendment was partly passed, as in parts J, H, K and L of that amendment were passed and the others were lost. The vote was 46 for and 29 against. So I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the motion. Okay, we're going to vote on this motion because I've had a note of dissent, so we're going to vote on the substantive motion now, please.
Lord Mayor, voting in parts.
Yeah.
In voting for, we are voting against A.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor.
Yes.
Also voting in parts. So in voting for, we are against A, C and H.
A, C and H.
Thank you.
Right, press your blue person and vote, please. How do we know that this bit's lost? Right, the result of the voting is that the motion passed with the exception of A, so 73 for, none against and no abstentions. So thank you very much. for Sheffield. I'm only going to have the proposer and seconder of the main motion because we're running out of time and everybody else will be formally proposing and seconding their amendments. So can I call on councillor Angela Argentio to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Lord Mayor, I'm formally proposing this and letting my colleague have a maiden speech.
Whoa, thank you very much, that's very sisterly. So may I call on councillor Marianne Elliott to second the motion? You may speak for up to two minutes. And everybody, this is Marianne's maiden speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a bit nerve-wracking when you introduce it like that. Congratulations to councillor Parek, that was a really good speech. I'd like to start by thanking Green voters in Sheffield who put their trust in us. And I was going to echo my colleague's hope that we enter a new committee system, as we enter the new committee system, all parties can work cooperatively towards our shared goal, which is a better future for Sheffield. Our motion seeks to address some of the impacts of the cost of living crisis for people in Sheffield. We are all too aware that national political choices have disproportionately affected us in the north. Money removed by the Tories through austerity being dribbled back through levelling up is just not enough. We know that our communities are facing real difficulties. I've experienced this both through my work and personal circumstances. As I was only elected four weeks ago, I'm speaking primarily as a resident of Sheffield, reflecting on what's happening in our communities and working in the advice sector. I've seen more and more people affected by insecure employment and not being able to afford essentials in relation to their income, month by month. If this is the bar at which we determine poverty, the bar hasn't changed, but everything else has, and we need to react. For example, improving energy efficiency in homes, large-scale retrofitting programmes will save money on bills and provide new green jobs and training opportunities. We need an action plan to address this crisis. The council needs to be at front and centre of that plan. We are closest to communities and we have partnerships across the public and third sector to reach those who need help. I understand that steps towards forming a cost of living crisis working group are already being taken by the Strategy and Resources Committee, and I hope that this working group will welcome working together with partners in the third sector. Can I continue a bit? I'm very concerned about digital exclusion. Since the pandemic, the provision of face-to-face help from the advice sector has really diminished. Without this, people aren't receiving the assistance they need to contact the council. Many people are unable to access the online and phone services. There are numerous reasons for this, and we need to take responsibility for removing the barriers. I hope that this council will support our proposals for a customer improvement plan, which will improve accessibility to services for everyone. Please join us in supporting these initiatives as they are attainable local actions that we can all get behind. Thank you.
But none of you are going to, because we're just doing formal now. So I have two proposed amendments, and these are numbers six and seven on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. So councillor Abdul Khayyum, can I ask you to formally move amendment number six?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Now, first of all, congratulate councillors Parek and Marion on their excellent maiden speeches and formally move, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And can I ask councillor Jane Dunn to second the amendment?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
And we now move to amendment number seven. Can I ask councillor Mike Leary to move amendment number seven?
Formally move, Lord Mayor.
And can I call on councillor Joe Otten to second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations councillor Parek and councillor Elliott on the maiden speeches formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Now, don't move to a debate on the matter, we move to the vote. So I'm going to move to the vote on the amendment number six, move... Were you heckling me, Joe?
I'll save you my buck, you're a bread man.
Exactly. And you should know...
That's not that big, Joe.
Right.
I usually get my...
I was trained by Gail Smith. Right. I am now going to move to the vote on amendment number six, moved by councillor Abdul Khayyum, which will be conducted using the electronic voting system unless we have unanimous support for the amendment.
Lord Mayor, we'll be voting in parts on this one. So in voting for, we are voting against T and Z.
Thank you. T and Z. Right, press your blue person and then vote, please. Right, so can I announce that that amendment is passed, is carried, 48 for, one against and 26 abstentions. So we move on to, hang on. Amendment number seven that was moved by councillor Mike Leary, which will be conducted using electronic voting unless we've got unanimous support for the amendment. Right, are there any parts? Right, Diane.
Yes, please, Lord Mayor. In voting against, we are voting for D, E, F, H, J and K. Which will need to be renumbered in case it passes as additions.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. So in voting against, we're voting for the addition of K.
Lord Mayor.
So against the Lib Dem amendment other than K, which we are voting for.
Lord Mayor, please can I vote in parts as well? I'm voting for, I'll be against I.
You're voting...
For but against I.
Oh, thank you, Paul. 26 for, 47 against, no abstentions. So we now move to the substantive motion, and can I ask that we're going to go to an electronic vote unless we have unanimous support for the motion? Dissent, right, in which case we are now going to go to a vote. So...
Lord Mayor, if I may in...
Sorry, Joe.
If I may, in voting, in abstaining, we will be voting for the parts of the Lib Dem amendments that have just been passed.
Okay.
Lord Mayor?
Yeah.
So voting in parts, in voting for, we're against T and Z from the Labour amendment, and we're only for K from the Lib Dem amendment.
Has anyone got any idea what any of these look like?
No, yeah. I've just said that to George.
Lord Mayor?
Lewis.
Diane. In voting for, I'll be against C and I of the original motion and T through to Y of the Labour amendment. Thank you.
So disappointing. So disappointing. Um, that substantive motion, which was moved by councillor Abdul Kayoum, is passed. Forty-six for, no abstentions and twenty-six against. No, let's try this again. It's still forty-six against? Four, okay. I am resigned to this, yes. Right, whatever it says up there. Forty-six for, none against and twenty-six abstentions. Nearly home time, folks. Right. Item number nine is just going to be done formally. So notice of motion regarding committing to the GMB Ethical Home Care Charter. So may I call on councillor George Lindis Hammond to formally move the motion?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And may I call on councillor Ruth Milson to formally second the motion?
Following my congratulations to councillor Elliot and councillor Parek for their excellent maiden speeches, formally seconded, thank you.
Do you want to add those bit, George?
Yes, apologies, they were both brilliant maiden speeches. I'm sorry, congratulations more fully.
We're all for politeness here, aren't we? Um, there are two proposed amendments and these are numbers eight and nine. So may I call on councillor Steve Ayers to move amendment number eight formally, please? Thank you, very nicely done, Steve. Uh, and can I call on councillor Kevin Oxley to second the amendment?
After congratulation, our two new councillors on their very passionate speaks formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Can I call on councillor Angela Argentio to move amendment number nine, please?
Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
And can I call on councillor Martin Phipps, who's too busy telling off his colleague, to second the motion formally, please?
Sorry, Angela. Um, congratulations to councillor Parek and Elliot for your fantastic first speeches, formally seconded.
Right, and we're now going to move to a vote on the amendments. So we're going to vote on amendment eight, moved by councillor Steve Ayers, which will be conducted using electronic votes unless we have unanimous support for the amendment. All right, we've had a dissent, any parts? Have we got parts?
No parts on this one.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Oh, sorry.
Lord Mayor, I do apologise.
Yeah.
I was looking at the next item of business. Would like to vote in parts. In voting against this, we are voting for two G as an addition. Voting against.
Right, um, that amendment was lost apart from part two G, which was carried. So it's twenty-seven for, thirty-one against and thirteen abstentions. Thank you, colleagues. We're now on amendment number nine, which was moved by councillor Angela Argentio. Uh, we're going to use electronic voting unless we have unanimous support for this amendment.
Lord Mayor, um, I, we do support this motion, but as a renumbered addition. So I will take the sides whether that's, we need to vote on that.
Uh, sorry, Lord Mayor, we are wishing to abstain on this, so that would be dissent.
Um, everybody press the blue person and then vote. So it's carried, yeah. Okay, that amendment is carried, forty-eight for, no one against and twenty-five abstentions. So we now... Oh, twenty-six, yeah. Who got in there under the line? Okay. So we're now moving to the substantive motion, which again, we're going to conduct electronically unless we have unanimous in favour.
There's always one.
It's only a minor dissent, I'm actually for it, but against...
Now, now.
But against two paragraphs, A and B, please, thank you.
So paragraph A and B, you're voting against, but otherwise for?
That's great, thanks.
Okay, so... Well, I think we'll all vote just to make sure we've done it. Right, that's sixty-nine... Oh, no, it's not, it's seventy-two... Seventy-three? Seventy-four? Seventy-five? My goodness. I suspect that somebody's mum's got in, it's probably me. Right, um, that is passed NEMCON seventy-five, no abstentions, no againsts, although Lewis has asked for his parts bit to be recorded. So item ten, appointment of chairs of committees, memberships of council bodies and representatives to serve on other bodies. Right, it is moved by councillor Diane Hurst and seconded by councillor Joe Otten that approval be given to the appointment of the chairs and deputy chairs of certain committees and subcommittees of the council, changes in the memberships of committees and other council bodies and the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at the meeting. Councillor Hurst.
Lord Mayor, in moving this, I'd like to just congratulate councillor Parek and councillor Elliot in their maiden speeches. And I would like to say, um, although the WIPs have met together and agreed the changes here, some of them were not carried forward in the report. So I am moving it on the understanding that we correct any errors and omissions caused by the whirlwind of the last three weeks very shortly. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
And Joe?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, I'm just going to give you three specific corrections. So on page five in the middle, Housing Emergency Subcommittee should read councillor Sophie Thornton rather than councillor Sue Auckland. On page seven, Cycle Forum should read Richard Shaw rather than Richard Williams. And on page eight, the two mayoral combined authority boards, those appointments are appointments of substitute members. The main member has already been appointed, thank you.
I understand that the officers have delegated powers in order to be able to make those changes immediately. And though I tried to be a substitute member for audit, they just wouldn't let me. I could dissent, couldn't I? But I'm more scared of Diane Hurst than you think. Right, thank you all. I mean, this is all quite a new thing, isn't it? I think you've been endlessly patient today, so thank you. L-plates one more time, I reckon, at the next meeting and then we'll be taking off those stabilisers. So that concludes the meeting of the day. Thank you all for your attendance. Stay safe. And can I remind you of the need to maintain social distancing while departing the venue? Thank you.